You're live, Walter.
Okay, start at the top. Why don't you sit down and take these notes?
One second, please. And if we could ask folks that are not speaking, if you could please mute your microphones, it would be appreciated.
Okay, back to the top. Under new business, we will discuss on the line where we're talking about the special town meeting, a joint meeting between budget and the select board to vote recommendations on the Warren articles. Also, in new business, I have a brief report on the transfer station renovation and the next steps there. When we get to the bottom of new business, Owen, you can submit to us the written performance awards and you can speak to them. It's not clear to me that we make a decision tonight. And okay, we know that the request from Sharon Sets is going to be stricken. And as a item under new business, seems to me the most important thing we're going to do in the next 10 days is to hold the election. So let's make that first. Other than that, any other adjustments from the board members?
I was going to propose we add a status on the Island Road project.
I think that the impression that I feel that we've left is that we're not going to comment on that until we schedule the next Zoom meeting.
I think the select board ought to talk about it so we know when to schedule the next Zoom meeting. You know, kind of where are we with it?
I don't, I don't have a problem scheduling a meeting, but I think the motion that I made clearly prohibited us discussing it other than at a special meeting dedicated to that purpose and properly noticed. I mean, obviously, we have to discuss the schedule of the meeting. Beyond that, I, I feel that's outside of what we agreed to.
Yeah, I do too. Okay, so put scheduling that meeting under schedule future meetings, Owen.
Can I do the same for the budget committee select board meeting? I guess we could just, it doesn't need to be a new item. Both of those could be under scheduled future meetings.
Yes, please. Okay, we already, yes.
I would propose that Director Drinkwater be moved up from old business to immediately following the fire chief under department head. So it would then go Library Director Alley, Chief Calderwood, Director Drinkwater, and then Code Officer.
All right, that's fine with me. Okay. All right, is there, yes, Owen.
I was just, I had a, I'm sorry.
Do you have your computer in front, your laptop in front of you?
Say that again?
Never mind, just go ahead, what?
I was just trying to make sure that I, oh, um, under Chelsea's resignation, I only put clerk, but I would, that should be clerk and tax collector. That was an omission.
Where's the letter?
I think I sent it to you all, didn't I?
No.
I will, I have a letter, I will get it to you all, but she has submitted a letter.
You waved it around last meeting, but we never got it.
Yeah, I thought I had copies available for you all, or?
I don't think, I don't know, I don't have it.
I will.
I don't have one.
But is that okay?
Yeah, she's resigning from three positions, right?
Only two appointed positions. The, the other, the other position is, is kind of a clerical thing. Clerk and tax collector are the only two appointed positions she has.
Yeah, well, but, but the personnel policy says that anybody who has a position here is required to submit a resignation.
Yes, she, and she has. I brought it last meeting and I'm sorry, I didn't try to press it on you more, but I will get that through you all.
Okay. Okay, is there any public comment for items that aren't on the agenda? Can the folks in the audience indulge me and tell me who they are? Because they're, they're all, the masks are a problem.
I'm Sharon Setsman, six, seven, two, spruce and root.
I'm sorry?
Sharon Sets.
Sharon Stetts.
Sharon Sets, got it.
And Sue Snow.
And who?
Sue Snow. Sue Snow.
Ah, okay, all right. Review and approval of prior minutes.
I'd like, if I could take a minute to figure out where we're at with this. I have, and I think I got this right, the minutes that we have not been approved by us since I was on the board are nine, ten, nine, twenty-two, ten, one, ten, thirteen, at five P M., ten, thirteen at six P M., ten, twenty-two at nine A M., ten, twenty-two at seven P M., and what's today's date? Ten, twenty-seven at nine A M. Does everybody, are we all on the same page with that?
I can't speak to that, to be honest with you. The only ones I'm looking at right now are the ones that Owen's given us, which is the 22nd of September, the 1st of October, and the 13th of October.
But you're right, we haven't approved executive session from October 1st, October 24th and, and October 13th, or whenever it was. Twenty, 24th.
Can we take up the at least three that we are all on the same page? I also have September 10th as well, John, as one that could be approved, I don't know.
Yeah, I said nine, ten.
Yeah, but Jan didn't say nine, ten when he, I just, I don't want to move on minutes.
I don't see why you did.
You turned off on, sort of on email. And I just got revised nine, thirteen to nine, twenty-two, so I haven't had a chance to read them.
Yeah, the nine, thirteen and the nine, twenty-two minutes, I had gotten notes back from members via email. What John is holding is the incorporation of those digital notes that has likely not been looked at by folks yet other than email form, we just haven't seen the clean copy.
Are you moving nine, ten? I'm reading it right now, to be honest with you, I had not seen it, I don't know why. Joint Budget Committee and Joint. I had no objection to this.
I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes of September 10th as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? It's a roll call, aye?
Spear, aye?
Right's aye?
And Sarah, do you think what John has?
I need a gaudy, aye?
Oh, I'm sorry, I said it, you didn't hear it, gaudy, aye?
The clean copy has your changes accepted. So I did incorporate those, I just hadn't accepted all of them.
Clean copy that you did, that's your own table?
Yes.
I don't actually see any of them.
And Walter, beyond that, I'm not prepared to vote on any yet.
Okay.
I don't know about others, but, but we got to get this cleaned up, this is just crazy.
Well, I don't know, I thought, I saw all the returns yesterday. So what was missing here?
I just got two, I just got ten, thirteen and ten, twenty-two, supposedly final versions, five minutes ago.
Ah, okay.
I'm not prepared to vote on those, I assume they have all the corrections, but I'm not going to.
Yeah, September 22nd. It contains all the corrections I made to it, all the amendments I made to it.
But you're saying?
The September, October 13th does not.
Gotcha.
And we had, I don't think anybody had changes to the October 1st, and I saw.
I, I haven't seen October. No, so you, I sent you October 1st, the change that was proposed when John and I talked. The only change from what I sent you all was incorporating that it answers to a frequently asked question. Memo was provided for the meeting and that there's a copy of the F A Q attached to these meeting minutes. That's the only change from what was emailed to you all.
I remember talking about the draft, but I haven't seen a final copy.
Just my computers, just my technical.
You can, you can know that's definitely yours. And John, I have a copy with that adding in the F A Q.
This is a correct F A Q? Walter, you had a question about that, right?
I had questions about the F A Q, but that was for the town meeting.
Right, but it just wanted to tap, so.
Right, one is part of your concern? Sure, I mean, so I guess, that's the one that we had together, called the Island Road.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yes, yes, okay, I'm getting totally confused.
There's so many balls in the air.
Okay, I'll make a motion and we approve the minutes of October 1st.
Yeah, second to motion.
Okay, this is October 1st?
Yes.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye, I do have further discussion. No, it's on the second page, okay. Ayes, spear, gaudy, aye?
Right's aye, motion carries. Other minutes need work, is that what I'm hearing?
I, I believe the September 22nd would be okay. However, me accepting the changes that were proposed and then printing off a clean copy was not done until recently. And Jan says that the October 13th, his notes didn't get incorporated into that, so.
Okay, then we're not ready on those.
Nope, but what I'll do is I'll check over, make sure I have all Jan's notes in there. You all can review the clean copies when I send them out. And then I'll have other minutes for you all to review so that we'll hopefully get all of them done next meeting.
Okay. All right. Department heads, Penny.
Hi, I'm going to start with the library. The front door needs replacement. I would like to go ahead with that and that could be funded out of the Randall Hopkins money for the Little Red Schoolhouse. So wouldn't affect the budget. And I am sitting here freezing because the heater is not working. I have a quartz heater, but I have it on the patron right now to keep them warm. But, so I'm going to have to work on that, it's getting cold. Guilford Butler Building, exercise is now happening Tuesdays and Fridays, 10 A M. On the playground.
But I have a question before we move on to Guilford Butler?
Sure.
Penny, is that a Renai heater?
Yes, it is.
And that's the heater that's not working?
I think it's the igniter. We had a problem last year and they showed up and they jiggled something and it's been working since then. But it's now acting the same.
The only heat we have in the library section of the Little Red Schoolhouse is that Renai heater, is that correct?
And I have a, a couple of quartz heaters, plug-in heaters, infrareds.
But there's no central heater.
No, no.
Thank you. I'm all set.
Okay, yep, so exercise is still happening outside, again, getting cold, but we're making it work. Um, I was, I am still opening nine to 12 Saturdays for the book sale. And I had one of the crafters come in this past week and ask if there was a possibility they could have a Christmas craft fair in the empty classrooms at Guilford Butler. So I told them I would bring it to the board and run it by you. And and then I was wondering if the boiler had been serviced or checked on at Guilford Butler.
No, I have not done winter maintenance on that boiler yet, no.
So when, when's the book sale going to be over? I think what the discussion should be is to winterize the building and shut it down for the winter.
We, that would be very cost prohibitive to empty the radiators. I think we need, have agreed to keep the heat at a minimal.
Oh, I, I, I don't disagree with that. Which, that's what we did last winter, yes?
Yes.
Yeah.
So hadn't really thought about shutting down the book sale, we're not using heat. We're in fact opening windows for adequate air circulation when the door is open.
Okay, but so, but the books sale doesn't go on for the entire year, does it? I mean, isn't there an end date, that's?
Well, I I guess that could be up to you, I don't see why not, if we have to minimally heat the building.
Oh, to keep it going. I'm, I'm looking for a recommendation, Penny, on what's the next step here? Because doesn't the book sale usually end sometime in July? I mean, you have it.
Book sale is usually a one-day affair, so this is completely new to us. And it's been very successful, it's given people something to do in town that they feel safe enough. And I, I've been spending Saturday mornings at the school. And then I come here, yeah, to the library in the afternoon and we have open hours, one to four on Saturdays. That's been going well. I'm also still here by appointment only and, or by appointment. And that, that's working out well for our different patrons. And we tentatively, we'll add Wednesday afternoons, open hours four to seven in November at the library.
Can I ask a question about Guilford Butler, because I feel like we're kind of juggling. So is there any reason that we can't winterize the building similar to the way, what we did last year? And I don't know what that is, I kept the heat on, did we, I don't know if we shut the water off in the restrooms. But is there any reason that we can't winterize it as we did last year and keep the book sale going for a while? Are those mutually exclusive? I guess that's a question to you, Penny.
Well, we didn't do anything except turn the heat down last year.
Okay, I didn't know that, I wasn't here.
Yeah, and then I, I tend to flush a different toilet every time I go in just to keep water moving.
My question is that can you continue through the book sale with the heat turned down where it was last year?
Yeah, as far as I'm concerned, you know, you put on your hat and your mittens and.
I, I guess where I'm going is I don't want to spend a lot of money on heat just to keep the book sale going.
Oh, no, I, I have no intentions of turning up the heat beyond the 50 degrees that we, we've been, we did last year.
So when does the, when does the return on the value of the book sale, not just in terms of dollars, but in terms of subjective value or emotional value, when does that value not match the amount of your time and effort that's put into it?
I, I don't, I don't see any end to the value of opening up the book sale. It's, it's something people seem to enjoy, they keep bringing books. I keep putting free stuff out, it keeps disappearing, it's it's no skin off my nose to sit there three hours a week, that's, that's really not a problem. I, I do daily checks in winter at the school to look at the boiler.
Okay, so now let's circle back to the, does it need any kind of service? Is there a winter tune-up like I just got?
I would hope so, I, I assume the RSU 13 had a maintenance plan.
Right, did we do, did, did we do it last year or was it that on, there, that was their responsibility, as I recall?
So do we have anything scheduled for this year planned? I guess I'm looking to Owen for that.
No.
Do you have that on your radar, or?
I do now.
So that would be enough.
Is that, is that contemplated in the the, the cost that we put together last year for maintaining the minimal heat, no light, blah, 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 blah?
Yes.
Is that, it is?
We put monies aside for maintenance of that, we did not put a huge amount of money if something actually went clunk and we, repair versus maintenance. And we put in money enough for fuel oil based on estimates that we did with the oil company on keeping the heat as low as possible while doing what we hope to be no harm to the building by having freestyle, freestyle. So there's money to do the maintenance on that, I, I don't check up on that building often and I will be scheduling that first thing tomorrow to get someone in there and check over that machine. And I can also have that individual go and hopefully do maintenance on the Renai heater. I don't know if someone, you know, you need less credentials to work on a Renai than you do on our, that Guilford Butler furnace. But I can work on getting winter maintenance in done for both of those tomorrow. Not going to be done tomorrow, but I can get it in the hopper.
Okay. Sounds like a plan.
And I, I'm sorry, can I, was there any resolution from the board on getting the front door to the library? I mean, the money's there and the Hopkins will, I just wanted to hear from the board that that's an acceptable expense and that I can work with Penny on getting that done?
Yeah, that's.
I guess the approval really happens when I have an invoice and we, we request a drawdown, you all are fiduciaries of that account. So I don't need it right now, I just wanted an indication that you support your library director and that recommendation.
Board? And this, this is the fund that's independent of the combined Historical Society Library, $100,000, right? This is almost discretionary for the library director, or actually, it's earmarked for this kind of thing. Is that, that's my recollection, that's correct?
Yes, maintenance and upkeep for the Red Schoolhouse.
Yeah, great, okay. So any comments, object, objections?
None for me, I, I just would assume that's something we would take care of as a matter of course. If you need a motion, I'll make a motion, but I don't think.
I don't, I don't see why she needs a motion, I think, I think she just brought it to our attention and goes and does it. Penny, do, do?
Well, it would probably, it's probably going to exceed the $200 limit in the purchase policy.
Okay.
Between purchasing a storm door and having it installed, it, it probably will exceed 300 easily.
Well, why don't we get an estimate and bring it back to the next meeting and we can approve it?
An estimate for the door, for the, the labor, for both?
Oh, whatever needs to be done.
Okay.
And install.
And install, cleaned up.
Can, can I offer a suggestion? Coming into these winter months, I, I would, if we find, you know, that there is someone in a price point that makes sense, I would like to move on that sooner rather than later, I, I think Penny would probably agree. Can the board be okay with some sort of not to exceed limits so that we know we're staying within an allowable range? And that allows Penny and I to get that done? And hopefully you're approving an invoice at your next meeting, not, not looking at bids on this? Just because it's, I mean, if we were, if this was spring or the middle of the summer, we could take some time, but we are coming into the cold season.
Okay, I, I'm fine with that, I'll, I'll, I move that we authorize spending coming to number.
No more than $1,200, I'm, I'm just going on the high end of cuckoo nuts, just to make sure.
I'm not sure, I'm, I'm cool with that.
Okay. Bring her, bring her into alignment.
This is a new storm door, purchase and install, that's what we're talking about?
Yes, yes, we need to replace the storm door.
Yeah, I'll say six times, if it's more than that, I do.
No, and that's fine, I just, I was just trying.
Yeah, yeah, and I can't remember, I lost my train of thought, I, I make a motion that we approve, meaning authorizing you to spend up to $600 to replace the
Second motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Our next meeting is November 10th, by the way, I think, that's the second Tuesday. All in favor, say, say aye?
Gaudy, aye?
Spear, aye?
Right's aye? Right side, motion carries.
And real quickly, yes, uh, just, um, cemetery, uh, I would like to thank Walter Gottlieb for the work that he's done in all of our cemeteries this year. And, um, most recently work at the village. Uh, Thorndike, the trees were taken down with the donation that was sent to the town. And Forest Hills is going to need some fence repair next year. So I would like to have Tom Fence come and give us an estimate to put before the budget committee. Uh, to put in next year's budget for cemetery. And that's it for me.
Great. Thank you, Penny.
Thank you.
One more question before Penny leaves off. Uh, didn't you ask us about authorizing or not authorizing someone else to use the building?
Well, the crafters have asked about having a craft, a one-day craft fair, Christmas craft fair.
But we didn't take any action on that. Are you looking for action on that?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Do you have a date yet?
Uh, no, I, I wasn't willing to go much farther than bringing it to the board to see if it was even a possibility for them to use the two empty classrooms and spread out and have a one-day craft fair. I would imagine it would start somewhere, maybe Thanksgiving weekend, something around there.
Who is it again?
Well, it, it's, um, some of the local crafters that were setting up on the library lawn this summer.
Okay. I heard, I heard pastors.
Oh, no.
I was gonna say.
It's Amy.
Are they selling profit products for a profit?
Yes, they are. Um, they used to come to our flea market and they would pay a table fee that to benefit the library, but then what they sell is for their, their own income.
So are they proposing to pay for the use of this space?
Yes, yes, a table fee, a modest table fee like they have in the past.
I would say, this is Amy, sorry. I, I would say kind of wait to see what the numbers for COVID rising is right now, if it's like a month away. Cause we've got a lot in this area just today that we found out about. So in Knox area, so.
That's why I'm where I am today. As, as are you. Um, I agree with that.
Walter, we have some from the audience who'd like to make a comment.
Yes, Sharon?
I'd just like to say that Dr. Shaw from the Maine CDC yesterday put out a formal statement telling families not to get together for Thanksgiving and Christmas. Like even relatives because the cases are spiking. And I think we definitely should be watching that before we open up our town to that, attorney.
I think it would be irresponsible.
I'm, uh, I'm hesitant to move with the hit with this. I mean, we approved the book sale. Now that's turned from a few-day event to an ongoing event. I'm okay with that. I guess it's a town event. But I think we know for a fact that that building has code issues and it requires a change of use permit. And I feel like we're sort of creeping towards changing the use without going through the formal approval process. So if, if I had to vote on this right at this one moment, not to mention the COVID, which I think is another separate issue, I would be opposed to it. Particularly where it's a for-profit enterprise.
I agree. I would much rather see him go to one of the churches or, you know, one of the other areas where traditionally hold those events, but I think with COVID, I think any place is going to be
I don't think that it's any
I agree as well, because among other things, it would seem to me that, uh, they go in and occupy those classrooms and then Amy and her crew got to come in and, uh, and, uh, make it right again. And, um, you know, we, if nothing else, we're exposing our first responders for somebody else's profit.
I cannot make a motion to deny the request.
Second motion.
Did, okay, Jan, you're seconding the motion to, to decline the request?
Right, clear.
Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Say aye.
Audio aye.
Spear aye.
Right side. Okay. Penny, we all set?
That's it for me. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Chief Calderwood hiding in the shadows back there last I knew.
Speaker. Um, I'm just here tonight on two things. One is to do with the, uh, proposal for, I believe, an ordinance or a policy for reimbursements for incidents for the fire department. Um, the draft letter I gave you guys has been modified. I had a phone call with the Fire Marshal's Office. Um, the section that you guys have, the last paragraph, I think would be on page one labeled arson. That needs to be stripped out of the draft because that falls under their jurisdiction and they set all the fines and stuff on that, that aspects. Um, I know in conversations with Jan and the rest of you about, um, getting specifics on the state law and the verbal aspects of that. That's why I contacted the Fire Marshal's Office. Um, he, they basically, Joe Thomas, who's in charge of Fire Marshal's, mentioned that, uh, the board should have the ability to set ordinance penalties designated state constitution of law that municipalities can enforce them. He also said on the title 38, section municipalities give authority of constitution of the state to local municipalities. Yeah, a couple of things he mentioned to me was give general powers subject to provisions of other laws to enforce town ordinance and also mentioned that making contact with MMA for guidance from them on that aspect. I know it was floating around in the emails about potentially making this an ordinance. I don't know. I, however we want to move forward with this. I know this was mentioned a few years back about trying to, when we do have these certain situations that arise, we don't really have a any leg to stand on right now to seek reimbursement, whatever we have gotten in the past has been on a whim and the court system has graciously given us back money. We've made a little bit on some of the reimburse or come up, but by, I think, having this put in place, we, me, the town actually have more of a leg to stand on than we do now on seeking reimbursement on these type of incidents.
I'd recommend we pursue it as an ordinance because I think to have legal standing really in ordinance, you know, town ordinance, which is a town law, you will. So you want to resend that to us with that paragraph missing and you know, I'm more than glad to kind of crack it into a format, a ordinance format. Get it back out to the other board members and you per review. And then we can send it to MMA or ask them for a review or I will tee it up for.
John, sorry, sorry. I, I didn't mean to cut you off, Tim. John?
So, um, was this discussed before I got on the board on something?
Yes, it was mentioned a while back.
Yeah. Cause I didn't see that email or anything. But can you just briefly tell me what we're talking about?
I'm sorry. Um, what we're
I think I know, but I don't want.
We, we've had, and at least the 14 years that I've been chief, we've had uh, what mainly brought this more to attention. We kept going to a certain location in town for alarms going off and
Yep.
like three within 48 hours and
And it gets expensive.
It gets expensive and they, they don't want to come out. They think we're just going to take it, silence it and turn around and leave and that's not how it works. It's their responsibility. Once, we'll stay until they show up. Um, then we've also run into, um, people illegally burning, thinking they can burn whenever they want to, which becomes an expense. And then, um, in the, we haven't had this in a while, thank goodness, but automobile accidents that we get called out for, and then there's no driver. They have left the scene because they don't want to be caught. And then they, the law enforcement figures out who it is in that type of aspect. And what was also suggested was having, um, set prices for pieces of equipment on top of the payroll in that type of aspect. So those are other things that we'll put into this proposal, which I will, I will resend.
I, I assume that's what it was. Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's been a while too. So if you regenerate it, when those updates.
Yep.
I'm wrong.
Now, I want to say, I believe you can contact MMA Legal by yourself once you get the draft at the form that you like. But if for some reason you want to, just send it to me or, or I can send you MMA Legal's email. They, you send it to them, they acknowledge receipt and then they work on it. They might contact you to talk things out or they'll send you back notes. So however you want to do it, but MMA Legal, they will accept it, right?
I have, I, I'm aware of that. Thank you. That's my comfort zone. I, I would lean towards ones that I've probably done in ordinance. I would never come on, so.
The ordinance, the, the ordinance is going to be created and sponsored by the select board, I think. Yes?
Yes.
All right. Then one of us will contact MMA since it's our ordinance.
I would request the chief, if he maybe could dig up one or two from some surrounding town.
Yeah.
Um, I actually did that before I got to this point and surprisingly, there's no other town in the county that physically has one. Rock, the Rockport of Camden was, had one close, but it didn't, wasn't as detailed as this. I reached out to the other chiefs to see what they're dealing with this alarm aspect. I mean, other towns do more alarm investigations than we do, like daily and ask them, what do they do? And just verbal information was given, but no specific, hey, this is what we follow.
Check with Walderboro. I think they have.
Okay.
Yeah. And the only exposure I've had, this was in Rockport, which isn't a good, no weather, but I kind of gather this has been like a sticky point. A lot of fire department side. It's not easy for you all to try to recoup any of these costs. And I think a lot of towns are hesitant to want to do what is the right thing, which is meet very specific criteria and you have to pay.
Just even on, just aside and on top of alarms, just dealing with a car accident, insurance companies feel the fire department's not important, so they don't need to be paid. They'll pay the ambulance, but they won't pay time to send time, will not pay a fire department. They don't see where necessary.
And I've heard more around small claims, but then fire departments not wanting to do all that.
It's not, and this is more of a pain in the, by not having this.
Yeah.
It's more of a
Yeah. The payment would come to the town, actually, if it was a town organ.
Right.
It would be a reimbursement of town expenses, municipal expenses.
Yep. Which is what the others.
It has a little, a little higher standing.
Yep.
We, MMA would know if there's one beyond that scale. I gotta believe that somebody in the state.
And I can, I'll get ahold of the chief's concern.
I know they had one at one time. Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that? I have one other thing.
Just, um, if, if you are going the ordinance route, just be aware of like the times of which the legislative bodies convene to approve this. If you, if you have a timeline that you're looking for, if it's an ordinance, we have to do a town meeting for it. So just as you plan, plan throughout, that's just one of those known to go to ordinance as well.
I was planning on, once this was finally approved, I was assuming just by listening to others that have gone on for years that it can be on the next town.
Yeah.
If there's still time, I understand that part.
For you, it would be you and I can't, you'd be looking at.
Right.
Well, if we, if we set the pen. Okay. And I understand, whatever the next town meet, I'm not asking for a special on that. So it's not worth that.
We'll, we'll know in advance, people. So there's teed up for that.
Yep. And if there's nothing else on that topic, um, just an update on the fire pond. It was in the budget for the stump-up fire pond to be fixed or modified this year. Um, if we didn't have hose testing coming up this Friday, we would have had it done with no water in it, but with a little amount of rain we got, the pond is full. And it's going to cost the town more money to drain the pond and turn around and fix it and this stuff. So I'm holding on doing the repairs, but unfortunately the piping and hydrant adapters already been ordered and it's on its way. So that portion, if it's okay with the board, will be funded this year and then next year's budget, the actual cleaning out of the fire pond would take place. If that's okay with the three of you.
I think it was authorized this year, so I don't have an objection to it.
Yeah. It won't be spent a lot of the entire amount of that was budgeted, it won't be spent this year.
Okay. So the, the accounting was we were moving X amount from the reserve to cover this.
Correct.
We're going to spend part of it. The rest would then roll to undesignated funds. The only kicker there will be that, uh, if the Gail Galant, um, accounting rule holds in place in the new regime, that we can't fund and take out of it at the same time. Okay. I mean, I'm fine with that. And you, you know, Brian, that, that our practice has been that if we underspend on something because we don't get to it, that roll to surplus, we then reallocate to that same item the following year. But there's no guarantee that we do that. But that's been the practice. It's been a consistent practice. Nobody's been burned by us not doing that. Okey dokey?
I'm good.
All right.
Thank you.
So Amy, we moved you up.
Hello. Um, so it was just the, um, ambulance service, the billing and collection policy? Transfer fee billing and collection policy we needed to, okay?
So the smooth copy that I got. Did that have the deletions that Jan sent you? Cause I was unable to go back and, and back.
Yes.
Okay.
And the, um, in the last page, the write-offs that John had talked about. The, the bullet points.
But, but my copy still has both of them in there.
Okay. So you don't have the right one?
Oh, well, I just got it tonight. Okay. Which, which, what can eliminate? Which one?
So, oh, I can't even share, can I? Um.
Will it make the three years or the two years?
So it says on the new one, cause everything got updated, it says the patient is granted a waiver or reduction. And then three years have passed since the service date or, and no billings going out.
Okay. So we struck the last one.
Yes.
Would that change? I'm fine with it.
Okay.
So I obviously didn't get the latest copy.
Okay. I'll send it tonight.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, this is, what we have is what I sent to you, uh, Amy.
Okay.
I think the things that you fixed, which is this item, is not on the copy we have. So if you'd send out the
Yeah, I'll send it right, right out after this.
So I, I'll move approval of the revised policy. Would that change on the last page, striking the three-year?
Okay.
I second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Um, what we all are victims of here is, um, the use of Word as opposed to the use of, of Google Apps and Google Docs. That's just one of the things you have to deal with in modern era. It's kind of like there's some places where you have to be fluent in three or four languages in order to get by, and this is one of them. Um, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Audio aye.
Spear aye.
Right side. Thank you, Amy.
So the last thing I have is the write-off authorization.
Yep.
So I have So I have a question on this. We had done this because these are all the way up through eighteen. Um, after this is what we have to discuss is if we're sending things to collections or we're always going to have a certain that's going to be written off. So that is, you know, these are the ones from sixteen to eighteen with that policy. Um, and then from this forward, we're at two years. And my question would be, are we going to send them to collections or are we going to do this every two years? Sorry, my pager.
Well, I guess I'm going to answer your question with a question. Were all these people giving what, given waiver forms?
So no, because we, that wasn't part of. No, it wasn't done. How's that? No.
That was part of the old policy.
Huh?
But I'm not casting any discouragements on you or anything, so don't take it that way. I just want to, so I guess my question is, if we're gonna wait for three years, why are we deleting writing off some that are less than three years old?
Because they're not in the billable cycle. Like they're not, they're not going out anymore.
Right, but didn't we just agree it had to be three years and and no billings?
Right, but the but the last policy said two. So do you want me to go back with these and are we sending them to collections?
I think the last policy said three. The two was the new one, I believe.
Okay, either way, it doesn't matter unless we're going to send them to collections.
The waivers gone by?
No, if somebody doesn't call us, so there's there's no process on sending either these guys to collections or sending a letter to them to say we need a waiver. Like there's no process. Nobody's sending.
That's kind of my point.
Yeah, so exactly. So I don't know what word you want us to do. This says that.
Isn't this what we just approved though, Amy? That process?
Yes, but if nobody responds to the process, what, they just can't sit on the books.
No one was doing it, is what you're saying.
Correct. So nobody's sending them letters. Nobody's telling them they're going to the collections. So it's supposed, it says on here that the town clerk and the administrator will sit and do this. We just changed it so that I could be in the process. So I need to know like what the process is going to be. Like, are we going to sit and write letters to every one of these guys? And if they don't respond to a waiver, what do you want us to do with them?
Well, I want personally, I want if they don't respond to a waiver, then turn it over to collections. But that's just, I'm just one of three. I mean, I I think people just ignore these bills and 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 we, we have a process in place where if you're poor, you can't afford it, you can get a waiver and we'll grant you that waiver.
Okay.
Or uh, just to, just to simply say, I'm not going to pay this by ignoring it.
Yeah. So I think, Amy, that you now, based that tonight, you now have a process.
Yep.
It talks about hardship waivers.
Yep.
What are the requirements for it?
Yep.
Talks about collection agency and and when we, when the town administrator in consultation with the director, you.
Yep, yep.
Do that. So the question I have is, have these two thousand eighteen collections been through this process to where someone has given them a waiver uh, application and told them what it takes to qualify? And then if we didn't hear from them, as it said, inside?
No, because I am, that's my thing is, is that this hasn't been done because unless Owen, I mean, I can, I'm pretty sure it hasn't been done. The front office hasn't done this, right, Owen?
No, we have not, and we're continuously confused by your billing and we know our segment and portion in it. And actually, my my question was going to be, I don't know enough about Higgins and any other contracts, you know, things that they can do. Like my, I guess the question is, can basically all of this, the sending out the hardship waiver, uh, the monitoring of it and then going through collections because Higgins manages our billing, like they're in a good position to help us manage the other aspects of it, but I don't know if that's something they do.
I don't think they, I don't think that they have, I don't think that that, what's her name, Terry?
Tammy.
Tammy Higgins has any kind of infrastructure to do that kind of stuff. Um, and I, John, let me go back to um, was your, the point you made, let's take that list to collections?
No, no, I, if I knew the ages of these, I would be willing to write off anything that's over three years old.
Years, right.
Well, so four of them are seventeen and you mean the ages of the data service?
Yes.
But this, this doesn't show the data service. I know some of these are five, six years.
It does show the data service.
Where?
In the middle? I know. No, no, we're not. This was in the packet tonight.
It was released in your other meetings. Probably so.
There's two, four, six of them. That would be.
No.
I have, I have a list that's data service twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, twenty seventeen, twenty seventeen, blah, 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 huh? All the way down to twenty eighteen.
My bad.
This is the fifteen thousand three hundred and twenty eight.
Right, and there's some of them that are eighteen's.
It's near the back.
I'm sorry, that was my problem.
That's okay.
Well, I think while John's looking, Amy, I thought, I'd like this more. And we can help craft a letter. It can be like a warm letter. You know, you fill in the the person, the address, the data service.
So, yeah, so if we can do that, Jan, um, then I can get Tammy to send me um, all the ones that are not getting billed anymore. Then we can, then we can send the letter with the bill.
Yep.
And then if they do not respond and say, whatever we say for, you know, thirty days, then it will be sent to collections.
There you go.
Is that okay? That, that's what I just want to make sure that we're doing that.
That letter would contain information about how to apply for hardship where.
Correct, correct.
Give them that opportunity. If they don't take it, then yes, I would say then it goes to collections.
Okay, and then I can, I can set that up so it'll go to collections after that.
So are we not going to write off the ones that are over three years old?
No.
So what I would, what I would say is we should right now and then start from two thousand and eighteen and send them those letters with the bills. If they don't respond, then we'll send them to collections.
Okay, two of those in seventeen are not quite three years old, but that's, I don't want to get.
Yeah, I would say just start with the eighteen's, but that's just, yeah.
I'll make a motion and we write off the one that's in two thousand sixteen and the one, two, three, four, five.
Twenty seventeen.
That are twenty seventeen.
Okay.
I second the motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Um, all in favor?
No, it's just.
So so I do have a question. When we do that letter, they're going to say to call the town office. So, and that's why it's always been the front office to deal with this portion of it because I'm not full time and I'm not there all the time. So when they would call and say, you know, I need information for this or this is the billing information, Terry would always answer those questions. So I think that's why this has been, there's been no one to like in the front office to answer those questions.
Well, Amy, doesn't that depend how we craft the letter? I mean, we don't need to tell them to contact the front office.
Who, who are they going to contact then?
Well, we're going to tell them what the policy is.
Yep.
What they have to apply for, waiver. And then they, then they need to apply it.
So they just then send it to the office?
Right, yeah, but but you're writing, they're going to call the town.
Right, that's, so someone in the front office needs to know this policy and know what's going on.
Well, sure.
Okay.
But I, I don't know what, I mean, the front office isn't going to be able to tell them yes or no.
No, correct.
So if we give them enough information in the letter, there shouldn't be a lot of questions coming to town.
So, yeah, you're, you're good. Um, so once they meet this criteria, then it would come to the select board to okay the write off? So it would be by number like it is right now? And then, okay, I just want to make sure, okay.
With your recommendation, I mean, obviously, you still have a voice in it.
Yep.
Sorry, folks, that's my phone.
Okay, I just want to make sure I have this all so we can that way I can tell Tammy at Higgins, the the process, write it out and send it to her.
Yeah, well, let's, let's work on crafting a letter first.
Okay.
And based on that, we can talk to Tammy.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Amy, before you leave, isn't Tammy supposed to send out a waiver application with the bill? I thought that was in the policy and in her contract.
If somebody calls, she can provide one.
Oh, I thought it said.
Not that I remember, but I can look because we don't, we're not sending them out with every bill.
Says hardship waiver form shall be sent by the TP via the patient at the time of the initial invoice as failed. The policy we just adopted, that was in the old one too.
Okay.
In the policy?
I know that she sends them if they call and ask for one, but I'm, I'm sure it does not go out with every one of them.
Well, at one point in time, they were. They were just, we had sent them a bunch of forms and she was just sticking them in the envelope.
Okay, I will ask her. I have a meeting with her tomorrow.
She'll do that again. I know she was doing that at one point in time.
Okay, I will, I will ask her.
Uh, we have to vote on the motion. It's been moved and seconded. Owen, would you restate the motion?
Uh, what I have is that John moved and Jan seconded to write off one uncollectible from twenty sixteen, five uncollectibles from twenty seventeen. I don't have a total dollar amount because it it summed all of them. So I don't know what the dollar amount is of those six in total.
Well, actually, um, how about we, we call out the specific one by date and amount? You don't have to total it.
I can total them real quick if you want.
Yes. That's fine.
Well, we can put that in the motion too, Walter, if you want.
Yeah, it's.
No one has that right here. You just add it when you.
It's two thousand two, two hundred eighty-five dollars and seventy-six cents.
Two thousand two hundred and eighty-five seventy-six?
Yes.
Yep, that's what we got.
And that's what I got.
All right, must be a plan. All in favor?
Antonio, aye.
Right's aye.
Beer aye.
Motion carries.
And and Walter, if I may, Amy, thank you for doing this. I know this is not easy and it's never really been fully implemented and, but I think it's important.
Yeah, so I'll talk to Tammy about putting the waiver in if it's not paid the first time. And then after the last bill goes though, I'll have her send it to me, the ones that are, and then we'll send our letter with another one. If that's okay.
Thanks, as always.
Okay.
Amy?
Yeah.
No, just um, I have not been made aware that anyone since I've been here has reached out to the town office looking for this information. I'm not saying that they haven't. Um, so even though we might be slightly deficient on exactly the process, please know that if anyone reaches out with an inquiry about this, we will gather all their information and reach out to you to make sure we're doing it properly. And if it becomes something we're dealing with more, um, you know, we'll make sure to train the the staff on how to do that. But I, I don't think that we've had any inquiries about a waiver and somehow we haven't gotten it to them.
Um, Chelsea has always emailed me and I've got it to them. So she's been doing that and we've, yeah. So whoever takes her spot, that would, I, I, I can talk to them too.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep. Thank you. Am I good?
Mo.
Hi.
Hi. Um, given the um, the letter that I just got, Mo, would you like us to go into executive session?
Um, yeah, it doesn't, yep, doesn't bother me either way.
Doesn't bother you either way?
Yeah.
Well, it's your privacy that I'm looking out for.
Um, I'm pretty open about it, so.
All right.
That's okay.
Okay. Um, so um, I guess John's going to have a lot of questions, but actually, let's start with this.
Yep.
Um, you have a change of status, sort of. So why don't you play it?
All right, so I have an ongoing autoimmune disease and I have for multiple years. And um, I've been reached out by my physician that I should no longer do face to face contact um, with work. And that I should be at home, um, if possible, doing remote. Um, or if I do any person to person contact. Basically, what my general comfort level in my last email was, um, is the same, same thing. So basically, part of my life is that every week I give myself a small dose of chemotherapy to keep my immune system suppressed from attacking itself, um, which makes me extremely susceptible to COVID. Um, to the point of where I pulled my children from school and they are doing remote learning um, from home because the cases have spiked and um, and I, I also don't feel comfortable, especially after our last, um, you know, what, two months ago, where we didn't actually have somebody come in with COVID, but there was a potential, you know, flaw there in our meeting process. Um, and that was kind of a, a big learning curve because there is stuff that you can't sanitize. Um, you can try your best, but it's not going to happen. Um, not without ruining, you know, half of the maps in my office. So I think that there just needs to be a little bit of adjustment. Um, in order for me to do the best that I can for the town. Um, I'm still comfortable doing onsite inspections if people leave the building. And I go in with masks and gloves. Um, but at that point, like I just, I really need the, just doing the, the normal six foot distancing really doesn't quite cut it for me.
Um, okay, thank you.
No worries.
One, one thing I would ask is up until like some recent time ago, you were producing really, really nice monthly reports.
Hmm.
I haven't seen one for a while.
That last month was me, not her. That last month was me, not her.
Okay, I was just asked, trying to get to it, so please. The end of the month is now, so for next, next meeting, our November 10th meeting, I'd be hopeful to look at one of Mo's great monthly reports, assuming that there was actually activity.
Yep.
Okay, all right, so the situation is now recalibrated, but John raised this issue, so I want him to have his airtime.
Yeah, well, I, I actually have no issue at all with the board booking Mo adjusting for not holding office hours, I guess is the way to put it. Based on what I know now, what, what I am upset about, and not with Mo necessarily, is, I don't know who I'm upset with, is I was, I wasn't aware of this, that the office hours had to change. Like I said, it's still on the website. I think it still is, that you're holding office hours. And I know you don't run the website. And the, and more importantly, the front office staff, Phil and Chelsea didn't realize that it had been a change. And people come in and ask them questions and they have to respond, as Amy was just talking about. So I think, I, I just think that if this change is gonna be made, you should come to the board and ask if that was okay. And I'm pretty sure we would have granted you. I can't speak to them too, but that's my sense. Well, I guess it's just a lack of communication and sort of formal process to make changes that, that bothers me a little bit. And like I said, I was trying to touch base with you and I came in, you know, one Wednesday and, you know, they said you had the daycare issue. And I came in another Wednesday and they said you had fat trouble. And I came in another Wednesday with something else. And they, and I reconfirmed that with them yesterday. They clearly didn't know that you were no longer doing Wednesday. And I think that, that's a problem. That's a, a communication problem. And I think the other thing is, I think particularly if you're gonna be working remotely, it's more, I think we as a board need to touch base with you at least once a month. Some like this.
I agree. Yeah, which I was attending prior to this, every single select board meeting, up to the point where I wasn't getting the Zoom invites anymore. Which I, I think that Walter and Jan, you both, I used to come to every meeting. I was there. I'd sit here and, and listen till my turn came up and I would always be there. But then it was brought, kind of, I just didn't get the, the invites anymore.
Need to make sure you get the invite.
Yep.
Don't let us know.
Can I, um, put something out for consideration? Of, first of all, once we get settled, let's go, what's gonna be the schedule or whatever? We do need to get the, um, here's, here, here's when you can talk to Mo up on the website.
Anytime by phone.
Well, um, what's, what's missing? So you answered my question that I sent you the email on. You will do site visits under, to, under protective conditions.
Yep.
So, but I'm Joe's citizen and, and what I wanna do is come into the town office and meet with you. So what I does, does your laptop travel with you or is it in the office?
I don't have a, it's my own laptop, but yeah, so it's me everywhere.
I would ask that we consider, um, for the time being, renting or borrowing from Gusco, they might even go that far, um, a device that will sit in Mo's office. And that, um, anybody who is facile, that you can set, that wants to set up a Zoom meeting with you, that you can set up a Zoom meeting with that person who sits in, in your office. How's that make sense to anybody, everybody?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. We can't do it on the existing computers, can we?
I think we can. I don't know if it has a camera.
Mine does, so I think yours does, Mo.
Okay.
But yours goes with you.
No, not so, I'm talking.
No. We have ones in the office too.
Okay.
And then you, you must have to come in at some time to sign over.
I did.
And turn it over, yeah. Okay.
So I, I would opt to come in, um, as long as I'm not making direct like contact with somebody, um, I can definitely come in and do all the, the paperwork portion. I mean, honestly, the other night I, I did it in the evening. It was pretty late. But I got it all caught up and, um, you know, filed it away and got all of the, I left the monetary amounts and that, whatnot had to be processed on Chelsea's desk. We had a great system, so whoever does, um, replace her, I'd like to create, just reiterate the system that we had going. Which was basically, I would leave, I'd leave a co, the copy that the resident would get for the signed off permit with a copy of their permit placard. And, um, the money that they had left with it would be paper clipped in a certain way on a stack. And then the money could be processed. And then there is a blue folder in, um, the drawer by the front, um, glass that the, um, whoever is working, you know, behind the desk can give them their, their permit copies physically and their receipt of that money processed once they put it into the system.
Okay, so it sounds like you could, so you are coming in to process and keep the files up to date.
Correct, but just not where I'm gonna have a lot of, uh, person-to-person interaction.
Understood. So I, I'm, and so in the email that I saw, it, it seemed to me you were, were requesting, I think I had this right, for the board to sort of formally approve you not holding office hours. Is that correct?
I can definitely hold office hours from remote, if that's better. But, um, like on, you know, if we set it up so that people can come in, if they wanna come in and speak with me and we can do the Zoom, I, you know, am readily available every Wednesday for the normal office hours, um, if, you know, to do that type of meeting.
Okay.
If that works.
We could probably schedule a Zoom call, uh, every, every Wednesday, you know, in a block of time.
Yep.
One or two or something like that. And if you have someone who wants to talk to you, you know, they just need to let the town office know and we'll get them the Zoom.
Yep. And I'm, so I have been doing a couple Zoom calls here and there for a couple of pre-existing projects. It's just been easy. A lot of them are out of state though, so that's why it's easier for them as well. So I'm definitely open to, I like Zoom. It, much better than Google meets. That was a terrible experience. But, um, I definitely wanna be here for the residents and wanna get their projects processed through the most efficient way possible. And I am able to electronically sign off on some permits and email them back to them. I just can't physically get the placard to them. So that's the, the only flaw I see. Like if they need that, I mean, they get the copy of the permit, but they need the placard so that, um, it's posted outside. So that's the only thing where, um, I need to complete that within, per our ordinance, within five business days. So as long as I can maintain that, um, you know, we're in, you know, our leeway of following all the ordinances and, and meeting our residents' needs in the most time-efficient manner.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm perfectly comfortable with this. I, I just think the main thing is, I think the people in the front office need to know. Uh, and we need to get the website. And if you're gonna have a, you know, a Zoom schedule or whatever, or, or have that, I, I, I actually like it on a call basis personally because not everybody, not everybody wants to.
Either way.
On Wednesday.
But I'm thinking, I'm, I'm thinking that if people don't have Zoom on their computers, if they come in during that period of time and have a computer that's sit down to and hold a meeting, that's all. It doesn't have to be the only time you can do it.
Either.
That would be a block of time for people to use.
Yep.
But I think, to, to go back to John's question, I do think, you know, Mo, for your protection and for the town, we do need to do what's known as a workplace accommodation, which is basically a letter, you know, signed by the board that basically approves what you plan to do. That approves you working from home, you know, coming in after hours to, to take care of the paperwork, that sort of thing.
Okay. And would you like me to draft something up to send to you guys?
Yes, I have, we, um, board, board members, you all have the letter from her physician. You, you, it's in your email.
When did that come?
Before the meeting.
Before, right before the meeting.
Oh, it must have, it was in an hour of the meeting.
I was up here an hour.
Yep. Yeah, you guys didn't have an op, um, a chance to get it yet.
What I need, Mo, is really what you wanna do. Just give me those, I can put it in the right format and everything. Just sort of send it to me.
Yep.
And we'll turn it around.
And that sounds good.
Maybe John has less need of this than I do, but Mo, you know, you, you're a report to us. But let's, let's make that relationship closer and more frequent. Um, in my case, um, I can learn from you, although if we're not stomping around to Jasco's house and stuff like that, I won't have that much opportunity. But, um, so let, let's, um, stay on the monthly report thing.
Yep, and I'll start scanning it.
Need to talk to any of us, please. Pick up the phone, type, type up an email. We don't act independently, but we do listen independently.
Okay.
And you can also email it correctly to us too. You know, we'll all put the hard copy in our packet, or, or normally does. Only Betty Thomas does that. We get it on email. And then we also get a hard copy in our packet. So if you wanna make sure that we got it.
Of course, I'll start scanning it in, because sometimes I just print it off right while I'm at the office and I stick it on Owen's desk because that's habit. So I'll start scanning it in and emailing it to you as well as dropping off the hard copy. That way, there's no doubt everyone has it.
Good, good.
And you also expressed some, a lot of concerns about, uncertainty about your role with the planning board.
Yeah, I was gonna touch on that.
And I think we need to talk about that as well.
So I have, um, clarified, um, I believe I clarified it, maybe not. That, so I basically am the one to coordinate, collaborate and make sure that the planning board meets and sets their date. And they, they need to meet, you know, at a certain frequency. It's been a hard time getting everybody to actually show up. And I also received a, um, a message from, um, Ryan that he's wondering when his time is ending. Um, and I know that John, you and I have spoken about this. Um, I've already sent an email out to him. I haven't heard anything back yet, so I'm probably gonna resend it. Um, and I'll CC you guys all on that, asking if he's actually going, feels comfortable staying on, is he, I mean, just being on the planning board, if you don't have time for it, just say you don't have time for it. Um, simply because we need to fill that slot with somebody that wants to, um, be a part of it and, and can provide that time so that we can get things pushed through, um, for our residents and for our town.
According to the town report, he's on for two more years.
Oh, okay. So I will, I'll let him, um, I told him I, I hadn't gotten a chance to look it up yet. So I'll end up, I'll message him again. I did just, I did try to clarify with him that if he didn't want to be on it and couldn't do it due to life changes and with everything going on, everybody, you know, is adjusting. And if it's something that he can't be a part of anymore, um, to do a resignation letter and be pretty forward about it instead of just not showing up to meetings. So, to be blunt about it. I have heard from our two newest planning board members that they can definitely one hundred percent and are very excited. And I think they're gonna be a great value, um, to the planning board, to be able to meet on November 12th was the date that we set. And we did accommodate that five o'clock was just too early of a time for people. Um, so we kind of went over it and six o'clock is, um, much easier. Now, I need to touch base with, um, Owen to find out. I'd like to set up the Zoom meetings myself and be able to, I don't know if I can push it on YouTube as well myself. I don't know if it's like a login credential or if it's a whole new thing that I need to just do on the planning board end. But I, I do want that ability so that I can, you know, get it done, because I do realize it is my responsibility.
If it's about Zoom, then absolutely, um, I am happy to give you all, you know, the, the town purchase, the ability to do all the Zoom stuff. It's under my email. But I, I told Amy and I'm sorry that I didn't get it across to you or any other department head. Uh, and I'll add that as an action item to leave, uh, that is a standing, um, town resource for all, um, department heads to utilize as necessary. And then just by the by, I just gave the board your September report minus the really thick all.
Yeah.
LHO supplemental COVID stuff. And Walter, your hard copy's in your, um, packet.
Well, can you tell me what time the planning board meeting is on the?
Six P M.
Are you planning to attend that via Zoom then, Mo?
Yes, yep. And I'm hoping to be, um, actually set, be the, the moderator for the Zoom meeting as well, um, so that I can set it all up, get everybody logged in and help people through it. What about YouTube, Owen? Am I able to get the production, credentials for that?
Yeah, what we'll do is, um, you, you and I will connect in the next couple of days. We'll walk through, we'll test run and all that.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, um, I'll, I'll bring this up. Make a note, Owen, down in the, um, in the, in the new business. I wanna talk about Zoom versus YouTube, but I don't wanna tie up Mo in that discussion. Just the, the hint here is, it, to me, it's time to eliminate the YouTube connection. Thomaston is going to all Zoom because of COVID, they're reverting back. I, I cannot for the life of me understand why we need Rube Goldberg to do our technology when, uh, Zoom works perfectly well for so many people. But I don't wanna tie you up with that discussion, Mo.
Okay, and can I give you guys an update on my current, um, licensing?
Please.
So I've reached out for, to Richard McCarthy to get copies of my, because I received a ninety-one. I sound like a kid that got a ninety-one on their test, um, but that, I did it on my LPI exam. So I'm just waiting for him to email me the actual copies of their certificates so that I can, um, send them all to you. Um, but I, I am all, all set and, um, just waiting on, on the copies back. The only page I could do is maybe a snapshot of the percentages. So I can definitely do that and email them over to you. So at least you have something on file. And, uh, I think they probably are trying to figure out the queue of what my number is going to be. My, um, my LPI, like permitting number, because right now it's zero, zero, zero. And I know that was just a temporary number. So that's where, where I'm at so far. And, um, trying to think if there's anything else.
What about on the CEO end?
Yep, yep. So you have to get all the credentials for the CEO before the LPI. So they're supposed to be sending over all those. And, um, I don't believe they, there's a number given to that. But, um, they've been kind of busy in the fire marshal's office because that's who runs the code enforcement and, and whatnot for certifications. So.
But you're taking all the trainings you need to get the CEO certification?
Yes, yep.
Yeah, I didn't know. So that's great.
Yeah, they're all online, so.
Great.
Yep.
Can we, can we go back to the planning board for one second?
Yeah.
My, historically, and I've been around here for a long, long time, to put it succinctly, whether it's in the job description or not, the CEO is the staff person to the planning.
Yep.
Put it simply, um, like Owen, sort of the staff person to the board, the CEO is the same to the planning. And I think that's an easy way to think of it.
Yep. Yeah, after, thank you so much, Dan, for, for emailing the exact spot for me to, to find. Yeah, after, thank you so much, Dan, for, for emailing the exact spot for me to, to find. Um, so I could read up on, on the, the role. And, um, that really helped clarify it for me because I, I for some reason never touched base on that. I think it just like everything was just a hop, skip and a jump and went so fast. And kind of, they weren't meeting because of everything going on. And then when we did meet like twice prior to COVID, that it was very, Eileen had set pretty much everything up. And it was already like each meeting had already set, you know, the projected next date. Um, and everybody kind of agreed to it. And it seems like it was almost redundant though, that it was always the same, same people coming each time. Which would be nice to get a little bit more diversity, um, here and there. So I'm trying to make it so that it's the, the ability for everybody to participate if possible.
Um, lost my creative thought. Sorry.
No worries. And Mr. Hendrix is on for the, the next planning board meeting as well as, um, we have some, um, you know, we need to have a chair and go through who's who and who's doing what.
Oh, I know what I was going to say. Um, do you know John Snow?
I do.
Okay. Um, he, he'll be a resource if you want to talk to him about relationship between him and the planning board because he had the job for a long time.
Yep. I do also visit the ord, I went to not this last one, but the one prior, the ordinance review committee. Um, I like, um, joining them here and there just to hear their input and, um, what they're kind of working on. Um, since I'd be the one enforcing those, those ordinances, um, it's nice to know. They have so many, they always see it from every angle and I just type, it's such a valuable committee. Um, it's nice to, to see the, the changes that they're making. Um, and they are a huge resource. I can ask any question and they're always very, um, Jeff North Graves and, and, and John Snow.
Oh, that's great. Yeah.
Yep.
Great.
Can I ask a question? Um, and maybe, I don't know if you can answer this, but over the years, and this is just sort of, uh, probably won't be issued now, but it'll probably come up again. Over the years, when we've had problems down at the town landing with people leaving boats there and stuff like that, um, there is an ordinance in town that direct, that requires the CEO to enforce that ordinance. Are you, is that, I guess number one, is that still the case? And number two.
It's still the case and I'm aware of it and, um, I would enforce it.
Okay.
If somebody calls and says that I need to be there, I live 20 minutes away and I'll be there.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure you were aware of it. It's sort of a age role for a CEO.
Yep. Yeah, it's, so, um, unfortunately I don't, um, and I should have actually spoken to you guys about this, um, a while ago. Um, I was assaulted in our town office parking lot. Um, I can't remember if it was two months ago or when it really was. Um, gentlemen, they had a teenager had crashed their vehicle and the wheel had like fallen off. And they were putting it on a tow truck right in the town office parking lot. And I had noticed that they didn't have the appropriate strapping done for DOT regulations and it just didn't look very safe to me. Um, so I'd said something to Owen and Chelsea about it and, um, Chelsea had asked, like, can you just like ask them politely to go put an extra strap on? I said, I have no problem doing that because I, I, it's safety. And if I watch somebody drive away in the car and if something were to happen, then I would feel terrible. So, um, I went over, simply asked, could you please put an extra strap on? Cause you know, you need, you know, to follow, do you read, read the book basically to him? Um, said, can you please do this? Um, he decided to use profanity. And I said, you know, it's really, it's my place of work. That's not necessary. I'm just trying to like, what if a child got hurt? You would be upset, you know, let's, let's just think about safety here. Um, meanwhile, the teenager had already gotten strapped out of the back of the truck to start doing that extra strap. Um, and, um, the, I'm, the parent ended up pushing me and called me many things. And, um, I did the appropriate thing by walking away and calling the police department with his plate number. Um, I chose not to press charges because it is a resident that, um, is hot-headed and things happen. Um, but I really did, and I really should have reached out to you because I feel like there was lack of communication in that. Uh, but I just wanted to move forward from it and not think about it anymore. Um, but just like I can handle those types of situations. I don't like to, who does? But, um, but you know, it got taken care of and then ended up the resident called and apologized to Chelsea, um, to me because he felt bad about it after. But, um, which kind of brings up like, why don't the cameras work full time? That'd be like lovely. Um, but anyway, um, yeah.
I spoke to you at the, uh, meeting on October 1st that we had about you getting some identification, the name tag, you know, your vest, you know, a shirt or, you know, a jacket, whatever you wanted. Similarly, what Betty has for, for her role as emergency management director. I, I was, I hope you took that serious because I was serious about that. You know, there's you can come up with to pay for that. And I think you should have business cards. You know, that identify you. I think you should have a kind of an official name tag or you know, whatever, so that you can easily be identified as a code enforcement officer.
I do have the cards, um, so that, that is helpful. Um, but I, the, definitely a name tag would, would probably help people identify. Um.
I think anytime that you're visiting a job site or a house, you know, you almost need to lead with those so that they know.
I, yeah.
Or.
Which I do generally. Um, I just didn't think that out in like the parking lot scenario, it would have been, yeah, I just thought he'd like be respectful back, but hey, you know, everyone has a bad day. Um, but yeah, when I do my, um, my site inspections, I lead off by having a card and literally pass it to whoever comes up to me first and say, hi, I'm so and so here for the inspection, give them the card and they just lead me to the site of where I need to look at it. So, or they call me and say, this is where it is. Uh, we're not going to be there. Just come when you can and let me know if there's any problems. Which that one works out too.
Okay. Well, you know, clearly it, it is unfortunate that happened in the parking lot. Uh, I'm not sure that I would have agreed with your ability to not press charges because I think that kind of behavior is not acceptable. That's your choice.
Yep.
But we need to, we need to not allow that to continue to happen at any time.
Makes me steam.
You, uh, you carry the authority of the town and, uh, and the, and the select board, you know, and your duties. That needs to be well established and understood.
Were you, were you working that day? Were you, were you on?
I was, I, I was, it was a Wednesday and I was, I believe it was a Wednesday. I was in the town office working.
I think you definitely should have told them that. I think if anything else happened like that, we need to know that.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep.
Okay. Any leading lines from you, Mo?
Oh, no, that's.
Okay. How about you guys? Owen?
Just if, um, Mo could stay around just for item B under new business. So if there is any, uh, discussion by the board on this, she's just aware of it.
Okay.
If there is no discussion, that's fine, but just, just stick around until we're done with item B.
Okay, I'm going to mute and shut my camera off. I've got to put, um, but I'll bring my phone and I'll, I'll be listening and, um, turn it on if needed.
Yeah, Mo, the next item will be, I'm assuming immediately tabled and item B is directly following that. So we're talking, I tried to stack them, so we're talking 20 seconds from now.
Oh, okay.
Okay, new business, item A. Um, is that tabled or, um, Karen was here, but now she's gone.
I make a motion, we indefinitely postpone.
Item A, no, you're, yes, I, I second that.
Moved and seconded, um, all in favor?
Audio eye, bear eye.
Right side. Okay, um, so review, I think really it's review of planning board membership, right? I mean, um, I, my question is, but before we get to that, are the current planning board bylaws, that's, those are the active bylaws. That's how the planning board runs its business today. Is that correct?
Yes.
I mean, it was established by an ordinance way back when, but the bylaws are the bylaws and that's, that's what we march to.
Yeah, what Owen said is just, just for an administrative standpoint. The latest bylaws, planning board bylaws are dated July of 2016.
Twenty sixteen.
But, but of course it doesn't say that it, you know, replaces previous bylaws or, or, you know, it's not a correction to them or anything. It's pretty, uh, it's pretty bad to be honest with you. There's also a set of bylaws that were, uh, dated in, no, I, yeah, eighty-nine, adopted in eighty-nine and then we're, uh,
nineteen eighty-nine.
No, and then later there was a, an establishment, uh, and I don't know if it's an ordinance or not. This is establishment of municipal planning board from seventy-three, which actually was amended in nineteen ninety. So we were kind of all over the place with this. We've got the establishment document, which is two pages from, from seventy-three and then amended in ninety. We've got a bylaws that were done in nineteen eighty-nine and they had, then we have bylaws that were done in two thousand sixteen. So I guess if I took anything away from this, and, and they have different forums and different membership and different names for, for things, alternates versus, uh, you know, uh, associates, memberships. So I, I would encourage the planning board to take a look at these three documents and come back to us with, you know, something that we could at least say, hey, this, you know, the twenty sixteen supersedes all previous or something like that. So that we clear the, we clear the deck of all this old stuff that seems to have not gone away. And as late as nineteen ninety, they were taking action on it. So, uh, that, that's my thought on it.
I couldn't find the ordinance.
Well, I, I don't know that we have an ordinance in Oregon.
Pardon?
There is no one.
Yeah.
John says, pardon.
Sorry, Owen, yes?
So here's, here's my assumption. They were established as part of a, a town meeting referencing state statute back in the seventies.
And that's still in force.
Yeah, and that's fine. Yep. Um, and then bylaws were made and amended over time. My understanding from discussing with Jeff North Graves is that there was good care given for the twenty sixteen bylaw revisions. And that's completely fine. That's how folks, uh, want, want to do it. The couple of things that I, and the reason that I provided the documents is there seems to be some, some good thoughts within the older, the establishment and then the, uh, older bylaws. Some things that could be incorporated into the current bylaws and would be very appropriate. Uh, and I didn't know if, if, um, the board had any thoughts on it. I know we try to stay away from what planning does, but you know, kind of best practices. So that, I mean, there, there's not a secretary noted. There's, you know, really, there's minimal stuff in those twenty sixteen. And then the only other big thing about the twenty sixteen one is like Dan noted, I couldn't find anywhere that the select board had approved those bylaws. I'm not saying that they did not. I'm just saying I couldn't find it when I looked for planning board stuff when we were trying to do their organizational meeting. These were the only three documents that I could find. And so I just wanted to provide them, you know, have them out there. These are old, uh, language and, and clauses that used to guide things. And, uh, you have folks be aware so that planning can look at it and see, hey, we kind of have some new people here. Um, taking some time now to, to meet, maybe look over some of these items. It's proposed, the planning board can approve them and then it would go to the select board for final approval. Um, it's just, it really, I just wanted to provide some of this stuff to show what's currently guiding planning and some other options that could be guiding planners.
For example, what's missing in all three documents is there, and I went looking for it was, what do you do when somebody resigns? You know, how do you fill vacancies? You know, there's one that refers to a, to another paragraph, but that paragraph has nothing to do with vacancies and how you fill them. So, you know, there ought to be something in one of these documents that says if somebody resigns, like you're talking about, like we had, you know, does the select board pick them? Does the chairman of the planning board pick them? Do the alternate or associates, whatever we're going to call them, automatically move up? Because it looks like you can use the alternates in here, uh, when you don't have a quorum. If they're present, you could say, okay, tonight you're a voting member. And that's literally up to the planning board chairman to make that determination. And then the next day, the next meeting, if there, if there is a quorum without them, you know, you don't need to use them. So it's, it's really, uh, confusing, I guess, at best and with some glaring holes. So I would, I would encourage Mo that the planning board kind of take these and, and look these over. It's something they could chew on, not even at a meeting. And then come to a meeting and, you know, be prepared to talk about it, give their thoughts on it.
And then I don't, I don't want to belabor this tonight, but I, I have a couple of thoughts on it. One is it's very important we don't lose the date on what the board was established because the statutes affect the planning board differently depending on what you were established. So that's a critical piece of information to current. This, this town meeting document overrules these planning board bylaws. I mean, this was in effect, it wasn't established by ordinance, but back in seventy-three, it was similar to an ordinance that was amended. But this is the controlling document.
And I, it, it says ordinance on it. It just doesn't.
Yeah, and really it was trying to do some, just some fact finding around it that I started to get, get the other, you know, budget committee. You open up their file and folder, a lot of stuff makes sense. There's chronology, there's history. And with planning being as important as they are, I just wanted you all to see what we have in the town office.
Well, yeah, I didn't finish, but, but, uh, so I would be very cautious about, I mean, this is something that I, in my opinion, can only amend it by town meeting. This, uh, this document, I think the planning board can establish bylaws for itself, obviously, but they have to be consistent with the, the creation document. And obviously this can be amended, but I think it can only be amended by town meeting. That would be my opinion. And I, I also think that the, although it doesn't say it, I think the bylaws adopted in sixteen would probably supersede and replace the bylaws adopted in eighty-nine. And in terms of the appointment, that's covered by state statute. That clearly gives the selectmen the authority. Plus it's, plus it says right in the, in the seventy-three ordinance, for lack of a better word, appointments to the board shall be made by the municipal office. It doesn't say just regular, so I assume that covers it. Having said all that, I think that I agree. It does need some cleanup, but I think this eighty-nine document is really, is a moot document. I mean, it's history.
Yeah, that was your food for thought.
Yeah, there may be some good, good ideas in there.
Yep.
Like, for example, I mean, if we were to go with the seventy-three, we're appointing to everyone for one year positions. And there's a, there's just, there's confusion.
Yeah, no, there's definitely confusion and that should have been updated.
And the seventy-three document refers to them as associates, not alternates. You know, and then of course this, this document says it was amended in ninety. Was there another town meeting that amended?
I would assume so, but that should be easy enough to find as a town meeting document. Did you check this?
No, that was, that was something that I haven't done. It's gone further and deeper into like doing the cross-referencing and pulling the seventy-three town report and seeing what's in there.
Well, not just the ninety town.
The ninety town report.
Well, a lot of the town reports, but this town meeting minutes going back a hundred years.
All right, that, I mean, that's way back from that.
So, uh, so anyways, yeah, but anyways, I agree that it needs some work, but I think we, I. So, anyways, yeah, but anyways, I agree that it needs some work, but I think we, I, I think that it, it, the planning board can't do it all.
Right.
That's my point.
No, I, I think it just starts there, you know, it's going to obviously have to come.
So what kind of work group should we, so they should start, and then we join, or comment, or add our insights? And what about that, the seventy-three document that says, the select, a select board member has to be on that board?
Right, I was just going to say, if we're to use the seventy-three document, one of us needs to be on the planning board.
And when I first moved here, one was. And, and I think we got some legal opinion that, if I recall, from somebody either our lawyer or MMA, that even though the ordinance said that, that we shouldn't be because of that appeal issue.
What? The, the, the appeal issue?
Oh, right, you know, we're.
That's, okay.
After something goes from the planning board to the appeals board, it could be settled by the select board, so. I think that's when we remove, Jeff, Jeff might know that, but perhaps I'll just send this ordinance, for lack of a better word, is to the ordinance committee. Because there's nobody on the planning board with any experience at all to speak of.
That's all I was going to say, when planning gets together to review these, as smart as those folks are, they all lack a lot of the historical knowledge on how we got to where we're at. And I would just hate to see it get more confusing because there wasn't someone there that could keep, keep them grounded in some of these items. I agree with him.
Good idea, John, I agree too.
And if it's something as simple as a Zoom meeting, we can try to get as many planning board members, some of the historians in town, and then because the buck will eventually stop with the select board, at least one, you know, I'll sit in on it as well as Mo, but it's always nice to have a select board member to verify, act as liaison for any of these. But just at some point, we should probably put together a little bit of a robust discussion on how we want to amend and, and work forward.
Okay. Any go-dos for Mo?
Do we want to take any action on this, or do we want to think about it, put to the next meeting?
I had no, as I thought about it, there's no proposed actions, really it was to get a sense from you all. Owen, you're wrong, everything is fine, twenty sixteen bylaws are great, and leave it alone, or yes, we see what you see, things are confusing, and please start working with Mo and planning to set something up so we can start the process of putting this back together in a logical sense. And I'm getting the feel that Mo and I should be working to schedule a meeting with planning, with some of the historians, with select board members. So, and then at that time, we'll be able to bring, hey, this is what happened in nineteen ninety minutes, hey, this is what happened after it left planning board in twenty sixteen. You know, I have record of it going to select board a month later, or whatever. And we can try to pull that data to really augment how that discussion goes. But really, the, the action was, you know, Owen and Mo keep working on uncovering stuff and set up a meeting for us to work on this, or everything's fine. And I'm assuming it's work on setting up a meeting and pull some more information.
Is the, so the planning board meeting is next Thursday, Mo?
Yes, on the twelfth.
On the twelfth, okay, so Thursday after. Do we anticipate that they're going to elect a chair?
Yes, that is on the agenda to hopefully do that.
They also now have to elect a secretary?
So that, there has never been one, but if.
There was at one time, maybe it wasn't recently.
Right, like, there hasn't been, I mean, is it, would it be, I feel like it would be appropriate to elect a secretary, I just don't want to infringe on any bylaws.
Well, yeah, sixteen bylaws are silent on so many different things, including a secretary.
The seventy-three ordinance, as amended in nineteen ninety, takes the secretary off.
Okay, and has a chairperson and a vice chairperson.
Yeah, and it also adds that the board may elect a secretary from among its members, or hire a non-board member of the secretary.
Okay, so then I would opt to elect a secretary if possible.
The problem with that is, you're going to, that person typically has to do the minutes, and that gets tricky if you're trying to participate, but.
Yeah.
Going back to Owen's thought, I guess I'm somewhere in the middle.
The.
I'd like to put this on the agenda for the tenth and think about it a little bit. Maybe talk with a few people, maybe talk with Jeff a little, and think of, think, before we jump ahead. Maybe find.
I don't think it's something that.
Maybe find out if, for example, the planning board were approved, we beyond that, I'd like to, I don't know if we'll jump into another project.
Yeah, okay, so I think we should, further discussion on the tenth. Looking to the twelfth for a chairman to emerge on the planning board. I mean, where I was going with this was, was get the chairman of the planning board and the head of the ordinance review committee in front of us to have a discussion about how, how we as a group should proceed. So, planning board, here's your piece, ordinance review committee, here's your piece, select board, here's your piece. But, let's come up with more and better ideas on November tenth.
That sounds good to me, Walter.
Okay. All right, oh, go to the homeschooling. And thank you. Everybody's gone.
Except for YouTube.
Okay, election, I wanted to move that up.
Yep, so in.
What's the plan, man?
So, I, I included in my report the election plan for November third. This was, as for my discussion with Chelsea, Chelsea's talked a lot with Brian and Amy. I have not talked with Brian and Amy, but I, I trust very much that what Chelsea indicates to me is, has support. I'm happy to read through this document for brevity purposes, or I can put it online, or whatever, but the basic takeaway is lots of signage, lots of indicators on what is six feet plus apart, you know, increased explanation on, please, you know, move ahead when you see the next person. We had internal discussions on when someone makes their way into the community room, but then needs to realize they're, they need to talk with the registrar, how we have them not go back up the hall, have we, how we move them around so that there's not people passing by one another, what to do in the event of an emergency. So we, I mean, there's, there's work that we need to do to action all of this, but we do feel very comfortable with what the current plan is, and how we cycle people in and out. And then, I guess the only thing that's not included in here is once everything is done, I mean, Chelsea said there is a, one elections clerk who's going to be completely dedicated to sanitizing booths after each use. I didn't put it in there, but it's going to be a long night for everyone, I'll probably end up going around with the ambulance, ghostbuster machine, and completely hitting everything that could have been contaminated in the emergency bay. But, yeah, big takeaway, lots of guidance, trying to get people to all flow in the same direction, move people in and out, and then this election, there will likely be a bit more prep given to the election clerks themselves on these processes than we have in the past. Or at.
So the, the guidance of the completed voter into the, into the, the emergency bay, that's an always?
Unless there's an emergency, yes.
So that's the standard flow, I had thought something different, but.
No.
The standard flow is, it's all one way, you never go back on yourself.
Correct.
Okay.
And there had been discussion about cycling folks out this side door. Even though lighting is slated for improvement prior to the actual election, the, that's not an ADA approved, you know, there are steps instead of the ramp. The way that we flow people out, it always stays on the same grade, it's always gradual. So we'll cycle people in and out as efficiently as we can, and there will be signage along the entire pathway. Brian's got a ton of those old orange cones that he can't use on scenes anymore, we're going to use those. Really, it's going to be like a big color-coded, follow the yellow brick road type thing, but keep a distance.
Okay.
Oh, and then I, and as I include in there, Monday at noon, we will shut down, I believe today is the day where we are allowed to start processing the absentee ballots. I believe Chelsea's plan is to hold off on that, continue to process the over six hundred absentee ballot requests that the town has received. And then Monday, we shut down at noon for all other town office items. You know, we still have to leave it open to the public, so our process can be observed if folks choose to. But we'll process absentee ballots from noon until close of business. And then Tuesday, election day, all town office items other than elections will also be not happening, I'll post it on the website and have that out and around for folks, but it, considering all the additional precautions, the, you know, and the flow and the management for health and safety, we don't feel that we can also be registering people's vehicles and, and taking tax collections and payments and things like that, it's just going to be elections from Monday at noon until Wednesday morning.
My only request on that is if we could get some signed up to that effect, really tomorrow. Just little paper signs saying that you're going to be closed, the office will be closed, because a lot of people come in, I don't know if they did in the primary, but in the past, a lot of people come in and Mo didn't want to register. And getting it on the website is, is a good idea too, maybe even emailing.
I feel like I've already done that, but I could be wrong on that, I feel like I've already pushed that out, but I, and Chelsea.
Maybe even putting it out in the email is that you're going to be closed.
Absolutely, no, absolutely.
You know, because, because people will get the email, and I will spread it to their neighbors or kids or something, you know.
Get it out of the way you can.
Yeah. Probably should have already gone up.
Think that I have.
No, and then folks signed up.
Yeah, no, I haven't put something hard, but I, I really feel like I've sent it out to some, but I'll, I'll check in on that.
Other than that, I, I talked with Chelsea at length about this, I'm, I'm very pleased with where everything's at, huge, like, we're, we're shaking.
I have no question either.
I was here Saturday, and I didn't spend a lot of time here, but saw a couple people come in and they were being very well-treated by our town clerk, and I, she says, I really appreciate her doing that.
It's your Sunday, too.
Yeah. Okay, have we drained the election for the time being? This is our last chance. All right, appointments and abatements. So I think Linda was here and gone, huh?
Yes.
Linda was on Zoom for a while.
Did she say anything way out?
No. Probably, why did you move me out? You want a motion to appoint her?
I don't, I, you can move, I'm not, I won't, I won't appoint anybody that I haven't met.
Oh, well, I won't go there, move, you want to put this on the next agenda?
Yeah.
And we know what term, when her term would end?
Is she filling Cliff's term?
I'd have.
She is, yes?
I don't know, that's a question. But I was hoping we could figure it out before the next meeting, so we don't have to do it online.
I would recommend we have letters, appointment letters at the time that we make the appointment. We could say just that, what the length of appointment is, and.
Oh, we need to know what it is.
Well, that would be on the letter. I'm making that assumption, yeah.
According to the town report, Cliff is two thousand twenty-two. If that's who she's replacing, I don't know. Is that the only vacancy?
Yeah, another one. I mean, we never got to nine.
Did we ever get a letter from Cliff?
Yes, we got an email.
Oh, well, we should have probably accepted that tonight, you know, that's on here to accept.
It's on the list. All right, so we're going to skip Linda. Appointment of, yes, Owen, what?
I, you can't see it, Walter, but Cliff's term was set to expire in twenty-two.
And that's giant of the town report.
Yeah.
Right, I actually have that because you sent it to Moira. Okay.
Do you want to table consideration of Linda?
Hasn't Linda already met with?
She's met with Moira, Moira recommends that she be appointed.
So you're not comfortable appointing her based on the recommendation of the chairman? I mean, I'd still like to meet her, obviously, put a face and name together.
Yeah.
Although we need to delay the appointment.
I kind of feel the same way, I kind of feel like we should have taken her up early. And I didn't think to mention that.
Well, if you make a motion.
But you want, do we want to do these all individually?
I do, because I want to talk about the next two, okay?
I, I would move that we appoint, is it Maltese? To the budget committee, as a, as a relief for Cliff, rest law. Term ending twenty-two, or term ending in two, twenty-twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two, I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. I want to ask her to come to the next meeting, tell her we'll put her at the top of the hit parade for her to do a meet and greet with us. All in favor?
VR eye.
Audio eye.
Right side. With some amount of reluctance. Not that I have anything against Linda. Okay, next item, town clerk and tax collector.
I've been thinking this through a little bit, and we're meeting on the tenth, Chelsea's leaving on the twelfth, we need to do a recommitment on the taxes. So I was thinking that we should appoint Owen, tax collector, effective the tenth, and then we can do the. recommitment. And the only fly in that ointment, and I'm sure Chelsea would accommodate us, is she would need to resign as tax collector on the 10th.
Okay, makes sense.
What she would accommodate us. And that way, we can do a recommitment on the 10th. So I would have moved that we appoint Owen Cassas Tax Collector effective November 10th.
Okay. For a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded.
Actually, for a term ending
21, and the term would be ending the first Select Board meeting after the annual town meeting, whatever that might occur.
Of 2021, yeah. There's still second, there's a lot of bud. Remanded.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye, spear.
Audio aye.
Right side. You remember how to do the job, right, Owen?
Yes, sir. I go, we appoint Owen Cassas Town Clerk effective November 13th for a term ending 2021 after the...
My second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Audio aye.
Right side.
Spear aye.
All right. Is there a motion to accept the resignation of Diane Darling from the Planning Board?
So move with regret.
Second.
Any further discussion? I, too, express the regret. Is all in favor?
Spear aye.
Got your aye.
Right side. Is there a motion to accept the resignation of Cliff Retschla from the Budget Committee, since we've already replaced him?
Salute. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Thank you, Cliff. He brought a diverse set of opinions to that board, that committee, and it'll be interesting to see what goes forward. All in favor?
Audio aye, spear aye.
Right side. Is there a motion to accept the resignation of Chelsea Summers as Town Clerk?
And Tax Collector.
And Tax Collector.
I think you need to take a longer time. There's going to be different dates, so I would move resignation of Chelsea Summers as Town Clerk effective November 12th.
Is there a second?
Second.
I don't want to vote for this.
Regret.
Yeah, what if we don't?
I don't...
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Spear aye.
Audio aye.
Right side. Is there a motion to accept Chelsea's resignation as tax treasurer?
No.
As tax, sorry, Tax Collector.
Salute.
Effective November 10th.
Yeah, effective. And you want the same day?
Yeah, because we can recommit that evening.
Okay. Effective November 10th.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Audio aye.
Spear no.
Right side.
Spear aye.
Okay. So what's our process? Theoretically, pre-COVID, we'd have to sign these things in public, right?
I have the... I didn't get it made up for Linda. I apologize for that, but I would just have to reorganize some of the dates. But I have the appointment letters for me as clerk and tax collector already worked up. I just, I put all the effective dates as the 13th.
No, I'm sorry. I've jumped to the state municipal valuation.
Yeah, I care.
And the same thing with the warrants. I mean, I personally am not excited about being in that room very much. So can we take a minute and authorize one of us to sign this stuff?
I think the warrant's going to be signed by majority, but there's two of us.
But, yeah. In a public, in public?
Well, I think the warrant should be, but no, I don't know. I don't know what the COVID rules are.
Yeah, that was something that actually John and I talked about a while back. Obviously, best practices is to do everything in public, sign it all in public. Sometimes there's a little bit of wiggle room. COVID offers potentially a lot of wiggle room, but we don't have clear guidance, I guess, at this exact moment.
But we'll have two ballot signatures, so even if yours has been validated, we still have majority.
Okay. I think, you know, this is going to come up again based on what Amy said, because the plague is not going away, as a matter of fact. I did notice that 0458 still has no cases, and 04859 has one to five still. It says up last week.
I move we sign the... Did you say we're on the municipal evaluation?
Yep.
I move we execute the state municipal valuation.
Second.
For the... I ask this question twice annually, and I don't know why I cannot get it through my thick head. What's the ratio that would trigger a revale?
It's in the 80s, but I can't remember exactly where. Once you get to that low 90s, you start to be concerned.
Eighty percent of what?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not an assessor, and I've asked similar questions, but it's basically your assessment versus like average market rate kind of as determined by what the state's seeing. The state generates that number, but it is based off of things that we provide to them. But really, you're starting to touch the edges of my knowledge based on those things.
I think what's more important, Walter, is the quality rating. As they put it in the past, as long as you're treating everybody equally unfair...
Ah, yes, yeah. You taught me that before.
And they did, we had this discussion briefly at commitment, and they passed out a sheet that showed that our quality rating, while not perfect, was within acceptable limits. I was going to do a little analysis work on it. I still have it there. I haven't done that, but...
Yeah, so what happened in 2016?
What do you mean? What do you mean?
No, what happened in 2006?
Oh, the one we did the rebound?
Yeah.
Oh, the quality rating got really, really... Well, first of all, we fell way below the ratio. It kept falling, but the quality rating was really out of whack. I mean, the waterfront property was selling for, I don't remember the specific numbers, but as an example, you know, for 190% of its valuation, and the non-waterfront property was selling for, you know, 120% of its valuation. Don't quote those numbers, but that's just... It really got out of whack.
So the...
They didn't force us.
They what?
They didn't force us to do it in value. I mean, they don't come down here with, you know, with guns. But they they can suspend some of your reimbursements, like tree growth and stuff like that, as a, you know, as a stick, so to speak, but they never got to that, and the town agreed to do a revale.
And May does not have the practice of if I sell, everybody in my neighborhood gets relooked at?
No, but certainly, sales can lead to adjustments. I mean, the assessors, without doing a full-scale revale, let's just take a subdivision, say, and there were three or four houses sold in that subdivision, and they were all out of whack. The assessors might adjust all the houses in that subdivision.
Okay.
They might. I mean, you know.
All right. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded that we approve the 2020 municipal valuation return. Any further discussion?
I just want to say I checked the numbers against our commitment of stuff, and I'm happy with everything it's been.
I did, too. This goes in my book. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Audio aye.
Spear aye.
Walter, right side. Motion passes. Okay, recruitment for the clerk's position.
I have had five individuals reach out about the open position. I gave some supplemental information to those folks. That kind of caused one to weed out, because I can't get a response from them. Tomorrow, I have two individuals coming to do a brief in-person discussion, do a very brief walk-through of the office so that they are familiar with it. Some of the individuals come with existing credentials and working knowledge and some of the items that this job would entail. Others don't, but they come with a lot of enthusiasm. So I'm happy with the response that we have so far. When I brought up pay, like I said, I only lost one of those individuals when it got to the pay compensation benefits, et cetera. So my hope is to, within the next week, really narrow that pool down, have additional conversations with these folks, have them converse with Chelsea and with other office staff so that they have a clear picture. And then it's my hire, but I'm definitely going to do it in conjunction with the office staff. And then, when we all feel comfortable, I'll make an employment offer with that individual and kind of go from there.
Your employment offer is contingent upon approval by the board as our hall hires. Just make sure, I mean, make sure that when you tell them that.
What's the official job title that we're recruiting for?
Assistant to the Town Administrator. I mean, to be completely honest, the titles have really ebbed and flowed. There is what is in your most recent documentation on job descriptions. There's a lot of deputies named and assistants named. Because we reorganized some of the, like, the hats that folks wear, what currently we are doing does not line up with the stated job descriptions line by line. They were all approved by the board. But it, and it's just kind of difficult to write this job description, because, you know, if the person comes in completely capable of doing everything that Chelsea was doing, then they walk right into that. If they, you know, have hesitancy about clerk or the tax collector role or something like that, then we would put them and have them fulfill the roles that they have the experience for, and then give them follow-on training. And once they feel comfortable to step into those other roles, then we readjust after that. But it's not, I'll just, you know, to be completely honest, what the job descriptions that are listed down are not necessarily current with what our operations look like.
Well, what's the ad say?
Yeah, it says Town Clerk, right?
Yes, the ad said Town Clerk. When I emailed with follow-on, I was clear that I was purposely vague because we are continuing to have internal discussions about roles and responsibilities within the office, and that we wanted to get a good, you know, grouping of folks to look at this. We're not opposed to training, but we love someone that had good experience already. So that's why I've been really kind of doing it more on a one-to-one. If this was a pre-Chelsea scenario, it would have been very easy to do a job description, because it was assistant to, deputy to, et cetera, et cetera. Where Chelsea is now the tax collector and the clerk, those items can revert back to me and then, you know, as they have tonight, and then stay there. However, I do think that there's a lot of worth in having someone who can be more honed in on their craft and, you know, focus more on election items and really be on top of that. And then you get these high-quality elections that we're doing versus, you know, having basically the bulk of all of these fall on my job description, when the reality is, I mean, I rely significantly on Phil to assist me with registrar things, the staff to assist. I'm the one that reviews everything and signs over when I'm the name clerk and when I'm the name tax collector. But we really haven't deviated much from these items being very much in office production, where, you know, we're discussing what's going on, we're assisting each other in stuffing envelopes or reviewing items, and then the individual who's named obviously has the final signature on it. But yes, I was vague for those reasons.
Okay, so the ad says Town Clerk. Does it say what the compensation is?
The ad did not, but my communication to them afterwards did.
And what do you tell them?
1635, I forget the exact change amount in 16, but it's 1630-something per hour. At 35 hours, there's benefits and health benefits, and then potential for ongoing continued education. And then I do reference that increase in pay will be requested in the budget process, but, you know, that can't be confirmed until town meeting.
So 1635, how many hours a week, 32?
35.
Isn't that 34 and 35? 34, one week, 35 another? Something like that. That's the extra hour.
Yeah, 34, 35.
I think it's like, at least it used to be that.
All right, 35 is in my head, but it might...
I think they swapped an extra hour on Tuesday, right?
Yeah, but because it goes on through the whole, I mean, it evens out at the end of the year.
So all of the towns around us of equal size or relevant size have town clerks. So if I go to the MMA survey, I'm going to find out what what I'm going to find out is most of the places don't fill it out anymore, unfortunately. Never mind, I'll do that research. As I do every year.
Only thing I would caution on that, Walter, is it's been my experience that it's very difficult sometimes to do an apples-to-apples comparison, because you really have to look at that municipality specifically. I'll just give you one brief example. The Town Clerk in Rockport, because the SAMASET is there... Because, uh, the SAMA set is there and the amount of time shares. Um, the clerk and, and the hot, no, maybe it's not the time, it's the hospital and the births and the deaths from the Sussman house. That individual has a much greater job responsibility than a comparable municipality that does not have a hospital in it.
I, I don't, I don't compare us to Rockport.
No, I'm just saying, if you find someone that we do look similar to, just make sure to, to keep your mind open as to the differences that might exist between a municipality with similar population. Uh, similar, you know, coastal, et cetera, a lot of things might be similar, but there could be some very distinct differences that cause, you know, that clerk to get thousands more dollars per year than.
I understand. Okay, all right. So you have some candidates, go ahead, John.
I have a question and a comment. One is, uh, you said you had five people reach out to you. One dropped out, you're talking to two tomorrow, but you didn't mention about the other two, what's going on with them?
Uh, I've been playing a little bit of email tag, um, with the other and then, um.
With one of the two?
No, 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 the third. And then the fourth responded to my email, followed, responded, I believe, to the follow-on email. I just have not touched based, oh, no, 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 I apologize, I did talk with her. Yep, so I have, uh, two scheduled to come in tomorrow. I have communicated, uh, more extensively with three of them. The fourth person is the one that I'm just having difficulty, uh, connecting with. But that is an individual that I'm very, very interested in having a discussion with.
Okay, so you, you have four lives, so to speak.
Yep.
At different stages.
One's coming fresh out of college with a, um, public management, uh, degree, very excited, you know. So I feel very good with the pool that we have. Now it's just going to be finalizing and getting it to completion, that's the, the bigger task.
So do you have a deadline?
Uh, November twelfth. I mean, I, I, I would prefer to have, um, uh, general agreements, uh, sorted out prior to your November tenth meeting. So that you can do your confirmation at that time. The only other, I mean, there is a potential that that individual might not come on full-time until after Chelsea's departing. Which is not something that, you know, we want, but we've definitely done before where we call in.
Use some turnover time.
Yeah, no, absolutely, I mean, I'm trying to get the individuals here as soon as possible.
But if people are working, they're going to get notices.
Yep.
You know, so we're kind of coming up against it. So my comment is, um, my understanding is we, we move to splitting out these positions, if you will, um, making Chelsea the town clerk and the tax collector, so specifically at her request. Am I correct in that?
Yes.
Okay. Going forward, I'm not sure that I'm in support of that. I, I think it creates an awkward situation where we have someone who is supervised by the town administrator in their sort of administrative assistant capacity, but they're supervised by the selectmen in their clerk and collectors' responsibility. So, um, I, I guess, I just wouldn't assume that that's a model that we're going to continue to follow, at least.
That, I agree, John, that was a classic case of we revise, we revise the structure to accommodate the individual. Um, it's, it's the opposite of sitting down with an org chart and putting all the functions across the org chart. And the difference is when you, uh, say, what can, what can Joe do? And what can Fred do and what can Sal only do? And you create your organization around those skill sets, which you might not be able to replicate that. So the, um, the bet there was, um, it was a resume enhancer for Chelsea in anticipation of, of continuing to groom her to be the town administrator. That does not necessarily mean that you repeat the thing. You, we don't necessarily analyze that practice.
Yeah, all I, all I would say is if, um, if the successful applicant there is the potential that we get another individual with a similar understanding. Prepping that individual to be a very robust applicant for my position when I eventually separate from the town at some point in time. If there is not necessarily that same level of confidence that that individual is moving in that direction, then I would retain, it would be my recommendation for me to retain those titles. I agree completely that that's an awkward situation and we did it very specifically. If we find ourselves in that same situation, I would recommend we do the same thing with the new hire as we did with Chelsea. But if it's different, I mean, I'm, part of my job is to try to set the town up for, for success. That's why I'm having these conversations and reviewing resumes and doing, uh, interviews. I want to know what we're dealing with here. And so if, if I say I want this person for clerk and tax collector, it's for a very good reason. And if not, then maybe that bridge gets crossed in the future after the individual gets more experience. But I'm just, having not sat down with all these folks and really hashed all of these items out, I'm just not at that place to say it will, you know, fall one way or the other.
I, I understand that, I was just cautioning you not to promise them that the board necessarily would agree with that again. I mean, maybe, maybe we will. But it, to me, the default position would not be that way, I guess is what I'm saying.
Yep, I agree. We have a.
And that's all, that's, that's all.
And then, uh, just because, you know, I didn't see it, I do, uh, Penny Alley did make three comments on YouTube. Uh, the board will indulge, I'll just read them. One, please post flyers at the post office about town office during the election. Yes, Penny, we will push that information out all over the town. Um, we will miss Chelsea, she's been a wonderful clerk for South Tompiston, I echo, uh, that sentiment. And recent real estate sales may have impact on evaluation. So I, I, I wasn't checking it in a timely enough manner, those apply to different conversations.
Yeah, all those, all those people from the high COVID places want to move to Maine now. Okay, um, old business.
Do we have an adjustment here?
You had transfer station revision, Walter.
And performance.
What?
You had two adjustments you added here.
Yeah.
At the end of all, at, at the end of new business.
Oh, at the end of the new business.
I think, um, that's what you said, I think.
Yeah, so the, um, hold on.
Do you want me to work on mine while you pull that up or do you want us to wait?
What is yours?
Uh, my request for performance awards for two employees.
Make a decision on that side, we're going to ask you to put those, give us something. Are you talking to Paul?
Yeah, so I discussed that with the employees. I do have some things that they wrote up, I mean, I, I can provide them to you.
They wrote it up.
Or, I mean, basically, I'm going to spend as much time as you all will give me talking about how great these employees have been for the town. How much they've assisted me. I would just, you know, end up trying to remind you all the things that you've already, you know, seen with your own eyes. What I've been telling you all for the months that we've had. Chelsea, for the time that I've been here with, with Phil. I have a listing of what we worked on today because that, that request hadn't, um, come. So I just didn't have the chance to really put it down in a formal document. What I basically talked with them about was you're awesome at your job description. Let's talk about above and beyond. And so I have, you know, a whole range of, you know, different above and beyond type examples of their commitment to the town and, and this job and their employment. And that is just above and beyond their exemplary work in their day-to-day tasks. We have performance awards in the budget for folks that are doing really, really good work. And I'm happy to talk, uh, publicly about the great employees that, that we have in this office. And would strongly, strongly, um, request and recommend that you all approve tonight. My ability to give them both a very modest, um, sign of appreciation for their commitment to this town.
So my feeling is put in writing what, what they're being cited for. Um, and then the, the, you know, the, then we approve it. And then the presentation is a public event of some sort. It's the whole point behind, uh, recognition awards. And not, this is not a bonus. Because bonuses, bonuses are structurally tied to compensation plans. And this is different from a bonus. These, these are employee recognition, uh, performance-related awards. But I want to, I want to see the documentation that supports it. Um, so that, um, in my, last three companies I worked for had programs like this that were whiz-bang. And the funny thing was that the, uh, the check was rarely as important as the public adulation that the employee got by being recognized by the organization. Um, that turns out that the check's nice.
Simply for timeliness for Chelsea anyway. Chelsea's is, is a bit more bullet pointed and I'm looking at it right now. Um, I'm happy to put a, a different document together for Phil. Um, but I would like to get Chelsea this performance award prior to her, to her departure as soon as possible. And I'm happy to read over these things from office work to, uh, additional work as clerk, deputy registrar, tax collector, motor vehicle agent. Additional work she's done to assist with the demolition debris facility. I could, I could go for quite a while with these lists and I would, I would use one of these. I mean, some things from coming in on a Saturday to marry a couple because it was convenient for them and they needed a quick turnaround. Her coming in, um, staying late nights, coming in on weekends to do a physical cleanup and organization of the office. During COVID, she did the same thing for the basement. Uh, worked very closely with the animal control officer to really uncover and understand our dog licensing.
I have, I have no problem necessarily with granting these. I, I don't know enough about it yet to do that, but I, what I do have a problem with is this was, I don't like doing this as an adjustment. I think this should be on the agenda. And therefore I'd like to have it, see it on the agenda on the tenth. I'd also like to understand a little bit more about where the pot of money is for this. And is it shared? Is it just for the office staff or is this a pot of money that's available town-wide? And are we sort of encumbering a portion of that without, uh, letting other staff know that this is the time to put people forward for that? I guess this is all new to me, we've never done this.
Yeah, that, okay, so the, it, it has a separate line in the budget, John?
Yeah.
And, um.
Townwide?
What do you mean by townwide? All departments?
Ambulance?
Yes, so the first recipient was David Elwell. And he received it for some because, um, he got recognized by the state as being the outstanding firefighter in the state of Maine at some point.
You know, at the end of the year and we let all the department heads know that now is the time to put people.
Yeah, they do.
But it feels like, it feels like if you pay a certain amount of money out, then there's less for other people, but I don't know, I.
That's true. We have a budget for it.
I guess I'd like to, um, at a minimum, I'd like to see this done and I think we can pay Chelsea after. I don't think that's a problem, she will be here through the twelfth. We can, um, I, I'd like to not see this done as an adjustment to the agenda, something just doesn't feel right about that to me.
Owen?
Um, so not having it on the agenda, that's completely my bad.
I don't care who's bad it is, I don't mind doing it if it's not on the agenda, no, I don't matter who's bad it is.
I, I did do that on purpose. Because when you don't know whether or not the individual, how the board's going to react to it, I didn't want to necessarily get anyone's hopes up. And I was hopeful to do it somewhat quietly and then, you know, surprise these employees with it. I'm sorry if that's the wrong process.
I don't think you need to put other names on it, I think it would be on the agenda, I don't know, it would say something like employee bonus awards or something like that.
Well, it's certainly out there now.
And I had, last year I made a request.
I'd like more time to digest it too.
Yeah, I mean, I, I.
It serves more than, you know, ten minutes of your standing up and talking and then we make it a decision.
I make a motion, we can.
Give us something to chew on.
I'd like to make a motion, we can.
And in the meantime, maybe it is something that we, we send an email out saying, okay, department heads, this is time that you're thinking about performance bonuses, performance awards.
We should do that.
In the past, it was a calendar year, you know, budget, so yes, this was the time of year where people.
I will do that, but it still is a calendar year.
Right. I think that's why we, you asked, this was the time of year to do it.
And I want to make a, it has nothing to do with Chelsea, it's just the process that I don't like. How much money is in that alliance?
Three thousand.
Thousand.
So this would take a third of that.
That was my intention, yep.
And that, you know, this is not a turnsie's thing or an equity across the board idea, um, John.
I understand that, but if other people don't know that we're now accepting nomination.
We've had, we've had to remind people and, uh, that there's at least one department head who, uh, hasn't, um, taken advantage of it. And, um, I kind of let it fall through the cracks with Amy because before she wasn't, she was not the official manager. So I will, um, basically now, I, I, the, the board has done, some awards ourselves, so, um, but the idea, it should be the department heads and, uh.
I understand it's not equal that everybody would get five hundred or five hundred, somebody might get a hundred. But the point is, I think everybody should have equal access to nominating people.
That's true.
Every year we vote.
Agreement there.
Fully used it.
Well, I made a motion, I guess I wasn't a second.
No, I'm sorry, research motion.
I'd like to table this to November tenth.
I second that motion.
Is there any discussion?
And as we've discussed already, in the meantime, I'd like to put out something to all the department heads. Basically saying that this is the time, but that probably should come from you, Walter, the chair.
Yep, I just made the note and I'll do it tomorrow.
And I'd also like to see some, as you asked Owen for earlier, some written documentation regarding any, any nominees, not just these two, but.
Right. Yeah, in your email, you did ask them to, you know, provide some written support for their recommendations. And I think quite honestly, the, the dollar amount should be left up to the board to, to decide based on that, that recommendation that we have. That way we're not, we're not having somebody come in and say, gee, I, I want two thousand dollars for this person and.
Right. And I think that could go either way, I might think of five hundred and loan Chelsea.
Well, and again, the demand signal isn't there either. And we have more money, I'd rather see the bonuses get bigger. And we have more money. I'd rather see the bonuses get bigger and we work your way. We need to vote Walter.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Your eye?
On your eye?
Alright, right side.
Transfer station.
Okay, so last week while we were while we were doing the Zoom meeting with the, of the FAQs and the warrant, the transfer station board was reviewing the three bids that it received for the renovation work. And it selected S J Wood Company, one of three bidders, lowest bidder. That recommendation was the CES, the engineering company that's worked with us on this, actually had them as, as who they recommended. They came in at 97131. If you add to that the 103357 that we already spent to buy the compactors, then the total is a million 73488, which is less than the 1.2 million that has always been our planning figure. So that's a good thing. So we have spent down to 97131. That's that balance from the bids. The three towns have 596079 in their dedicated reserves for this. Which means that the transfer station board will come to the towns for authorization to borrow or bond 374052. We haven't scheduled, mapped out the process yet. But the, and the state of emergency is going to have an impact on this. What we'd like to do is to have all three select boards in session as a group. The O H S T T board had a public meeting in which the engineers and the contractors will run people, present the plan. We did this once before. We happened to do it here in the community room. But it was just the select boards and the transfer station board. So that, mapping that out or flowing that out will be the next the next set of events.
How long are these bids good for?
I, you know what? Because I wasn't there, I wasn't there for the opening, I wasn't there for the approval. So I haven't really delved into them.
I mean, this is going to be a long process.
That's why they want to have all three towns same time.
I know, but still, just typical town meetings and
Yep.
You just did, if we don't have to talk about this now, I just want to make sure that our town is prepared to at least pose the question to its citizens in the, in the best possible way. So just knowing, I'm not overly aware of this transfer station and interlocal agreement processes. You know, how, how the vote, is it at a town meeting? And I'm also just kind of curious. Is this a cumulative vote between the three towns or can one town by majority derail the whole process?
Not over borrowing.
I don't know.
One town, we asked, one, any, any town that, any town that says no derails the process.
What percentage of 374 dollars just brought?
Hold on, I, I have not answered. Reddit almost took off my fingers. Our, our percentage is I didn't use the percentage. Hold on, I gotta do, I gotta do some math.
Less than a third, I would say.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
That's an owl's head is about the same. Yeah, Thomasston is the biggest.
We're 26.3%.
Twenty six.
26.3, Owl's head's like 28.3. And Thomasston's the rest.
So we're talking, we're talking
pushing 90,000?
Yeah, that, less than, less than 80, 80 million, 36.
Yeah, so you're author, you'd be, we'd be authorizing, this is funny because I'm, I'm in the rock and a hard place. You guys would be authorizing to borrow. Now, we haven't just figured out the payback, but the logical thing to me says that we figure out what the depreciation, what the depreciation schedule is for all this stuff. That we borrow for that term. And that the debt service gets additive to the assessment that the towns pay over that period of time.
Yeah, that's assuming they can borrow money. I'm not sure they can.
We can.
Or, I think, okay.
If you authorize us, we can.
Okay, change the change then.
We're, we're, we're a light nonprofit, something or other corporation cooperative.
Was it a public or?
They can act like it, but they have to get approval from, like that cascading down.
Well, that's because they have no pastor.
Yeah, right. Them to the board, boards to the citizenry. And if there's any break in the linkage, it doesn't go forward.
So more to come on this, I think.
Yep. So the encouraging thing was coming under the 1.2 million dollar number. I did not expect that. Those go, all goes all the way back to 2016.
Does that include the scale?
Yeah, I gotta, I go, I don't know. I knew you were going to ask, but I didn't find out.
I think it's critical. I've always thought
By the scale.
And so when do you anticipate this meeting, joint meeting would be?
I have no anticipation because I missed the two meetings where this, this happened because of conflicts with this job. Owen?
Just if I could, Walter, if you find that, you know, what was proposed and then quoted on is basically apples to apples with what you've been dealing with before. The only thing I'd ask you all to think on is this is potentially in large part why I've been trying to move quickly on the Island Road project. A lot of us had anticipated that these larger construction firms, due to COVID pause and other factors, we'd seen a huge spike in what the bids were coming back at previously, especially during 19, that 18 to 19 transition. And we had hoped to see, for all these different reasons, I'm not going to bore you all with, that quotes and bids were coming back more in line with estimates. So if it turns out that this is just a really good bid, that seems to stack up with the theory I've been talking with engineers and other folks about that bids were going to start coming back. We were seeing bids coming in quarter, 30, 30% above what was estimated. And those estimations were, were generated very recently.
Who's wait?
So other projects I'd seen in other towns from old work that was, I was still clinging on to, a lot of Camden Rockport stuff, Hope. And there was a series, it's basically 18 to 19. Virtually every bid that was coming back was coming back between a quarter and a third higher than estimated. And when you started asking as to why, you'd get these explanations. And a lot of those as to whys were starting to get mitigated out. And then when you throw COVID and a lot of municipalities crafting their budgets in the middle of it, they pulled back a lot on some capital expenses and improvements because there was concern about the economic activity and the tax base and all that. And so those that could come up with the money and could say yes to the project, there was speculation that the bids were going to start coming back more reasonable and more in line with estimates. So I'd just, I'd be happy to hear that that is the case. And really, it's a, a little bit of a, that's why I was trying to move so quickly on getting bid spec documents for the Island Road. I, I thought that there would be a good window to get reasonable bids back.
Okay, well, let's move on to old business. And I guess I'd like to take this out of order and ask the question of whether we think that November 20th is the right date for a town, special town meeting, given everything else that's going on.
November 20th or the 17th?
Or is it the 17th? I keep getting confused.
I thought, well, I don't know. I thought that would be it.
Seventeenth.
Well, do we have a place lined up? If we decide to do it on the 17th?
Yes, we can use the county airport maintenance hangar. I just need to know sooner rather than later. So I can sign the same agreement that we did for town meeting. And I have left Mr. Torpe, Torpe in some purgatory because I don't, I don't have anything to tell him. When we left it last, he didn't have anything on it. He said, just let me know. You, you all are more than welcome to use it.
What about the fellowship hall?
That's Mr. Torpe.
Yeah, that's the method is fellowship hall.
So unless something has changed, which I don't believe it has, we could go either with the fellowship hall down the road, smaller venue, but nicer. Or we could go back to the maintenance bay, larger, colder, better ventilation. It's, it's up to you. We have standing offers for both. I just needed to know where you all wanted to do it.
I don't think we need the airport. Based on the participation we had the other night.
We, we might need, might need, might only need my basement based on that participation.
I hate to sign the warrant until we've turned up 100% that, that to go there. And wasn't there some discussion about talking to the pastor as opposed to?
Uh, yeah.
That ever happen?
I think that's, I would like to think that talking to Torpe, you're talking to, you know, he's, he's talking to the pastor. He's a guy that coordinates the use of facility.
I wasn't put in touch with anyone else.
I thought we were cautioned to. Like someone. Oh, I don't know. Well, I, I've given this a lot of thought and I'm ready to move ahead with it. For all the wrong reasons. But I know, what, 17th, you know, we, if, if that feels a little rough, we got a lot on our plates. And you know, if, if we want to move it to a, a week in December or something, I'm, I'm fine with that.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt.
No, early December. Cause I, I just don't think we're going to have more than a handful of people there. I really don't.
December 1st is a Tuesday. You all could approve final warrant. I would be able to tell you completely the availability of the, the church space by November 10. So you have the November 24th is a Tuesday, December 1st and December 8th. Pass that and get bar.
Yeah, I, I, my thought process was I like either December 8th or 15th.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I think we got to get the budget maybe being in too, so.
Yeah, so it becomes a question of getting the right language of the warrant. Setting up a Zoom meeting with those folks. And, and the reason I, the reason I like the 8th or the 15th is simply because we're either going to feel better about our ability to get it done by then or we'll feel so bad that we won't do it at all.
Yeah. I like the 8th.
If, if you do it on the 8th, you then have two of your regular meetings with opportunities to set the warrant with the seven day notice. Because your next meetings are the 10th and the 24th of November. Either this could be approved and satisfy the, the notification requirements as long as you get that ready.
That would, that would be the night that we would typically meet at the 4th. But I think we could perhaps be there and then come back here and convene the selectance meeting after. Or by Zoom by then maybe. Or we could move the selectance meeting to the 15th if we're only having one in December.
Probably only get one in December. That's what we talked.
Yeah. Yeah. So the 8th for the town meeting, the 15th for the, for the December select board meeting, and then we go away for Christmas. Or we go, we go home for Christmas.
But back on the warrant, I sent Owen an email. I think we need to, it dawned on me that the assessors is a separate office.
The warrant that, or you're, you're going to say the same thing, I think. The final warrant that I've seen in email does not include your changes, does not include Jeff's changes. So we're not there.
Well, we need to finalize it.
Yeah. But go ahead, you, you were going to say add the
Yeah, I, I, the overseers of the 4 is incredible. The selection by state statute aren't the overseers of the 4. But the assessors is a separate office. So that should be definitely added. And we might as well add the overseers because that's the way we always word it.
You're talking about their elections.
Yeah, in Article 6, you would say including the select board, comma, assessors. I sent your email on. Assessors, comma, and overseers of the 4. And I had a couple other little things in that email too that I don't remember.
The only thing you highlighted.
Oh, no, these were changes I gave you earlier. The adding the word 4 and Article 1, which I think was in Jeff's. In Article 5, it says Article 1, should be re- recorded Article 2.
Yeah, Jeff changed that.
Yeah, and then I have adding the word 4 between Article 6, between provide and municipal.
You know what I'll do for an action item? Is take the email notes I've gotten plus Jeff's suggestion. I will send out this warrant and I will very prominently display on it revision 1. And then
There's at least four in front of me right now.
No, I know, but it's a clean slate. So we're going to start, we'll start with one.
Well, then I would ask you to leave it alone and let me do that.
Okay. Great.
Because if nothing else, I've been tracking these things.
I just figured
But I bought the revision thing.
I'm, I'm trying to learn, you know, learn from our mistakes.
Got to do it in everything.
And everything getting crossed over, especially if we're going to be offering suggestions.
I think we're very close. If we incorporate John's and Jeff's, this one already had mine in it. And now that we've talked about the location.
Now you got to change the date.
Yeah, and the dates.
And also given under our hands, it wouldn't be the 22nd.
That's right. That's right. I'll be chief for the next meeting on the 10th of November.
Yep. So this one, you though, sir, it's not, I'm not sending out a revision.
I don't think you need to do it. I, I mean, I've got them. I've been working on it for several weeks now. And the same thing, since around this, that's the warrant, the facts. Again, I'm I got several versions of the facts. I get to see one, two, three, four versions. And the latest version, which has much like track changes in it. But we're now down to, in the latest version, basically only three questions.
No, that was the wrong version that went up.
That's kind of enough. Because we had, we had this version.
Yes, that was all of us there.
Which was, which was a two pager.
That's because Owen didn't have the, he, Owen edited the Walters version. That's because Owen didn't have the, he, Owen edited the Walters version. We had this got in a week early.
Okay, well, that, that was my question, because I thought we were back to the two pager.
Sir, so this is the main page. Expanded FAQ for special town meeting.
What are you looking at?
This is the web, the municipality's main page on our website.
Yep.
Under expanded FAQ for special town meeting. This is the latest version, and I don't believe there's been any other changes proposed to it since then. And it's, it's the two pager that I had made that error and I had amended an older document and then put that out. I subbed that one out and put it.
So that must be revision five.
Likely.
Because I have four different versions here and I don't have that one. That's already on the webpage.
Hmm, but i- it's basically what you have there.
Now, I don't believe that for a moment. I mean, I wanna look at it, because I, I don't believe that. This, this one, the long version was not ready to be published. I mean, I got, there's all kinds of holes in it, all kinds of questions on it. So I, I, I now need a copy of the one on the website to look at.
Sure.
Yeah, this whole thing isn't working very well with everybody editing it.
Yeah. And again, it's something you can't do it on. I just would prefer to keep it myself now. And we just keep one person doing it.
I am perfectly fine with that, sir.
Because it, it's really confusing.
Yeah.
You know, either need to, either need to put dates on them. So we can kind of, like, I'm tracking the dates from the email date. I went back and looked at all my emails to try and figure out what was the most recent version, and we got some of them, like in the warrant, where Jeff, Jeff's version came in actually the day on the twenty second. And Spears came on the twenty third. And the one that we published is the smooth one. That Walter sent to Moira was on the twenty second. Went out before those changes could have been put in, so it's just.
It's all over the road.
Yeah, we're all over it.
So Jan's the focal point.
I agree with you. We need to start ground zero, so I will, I will put something out and say, you know, revision eight. Instead of saying revision one or two, we said we've been so confused. Revision as of or something like that.
And what everyone has in their inbox right now is what I just took off the website and it says website FAQ latest. That's what posted right now.
Okay. And, and it, it might be. I would ask that we all look at that. And let me know if that, that's got the, I'll look and see if it's got Jeff's things in it. And I've got, I've got the one that, John, that you sent.
Yeah.
I just, that change, but.
Would Jeff provide notes on the FAQ? I thought he only provided on the warrant. Okay. And the draft warrant I have not touched since you all started fiddling on the website anyway.
Can you remind me what Jeff's suggestions on the warrant were?
Yep. Yep, Article four. Well, yeah, I can do it to you. Okay, you got it. Oh, this is another version? So I think it's the same version. I thought it was the same one that you found in that.
No. So this is a whole different version.
This is, this is the one that Jeff had sent to me like the, the day before we had the public hearing. And I thought we basically incorporated those items while we were talking.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I, I, I do remember talking about this. I don't remember seeing this, but.
Well, and he sent it to me and then I forwarded it to you all, but not in enough time for your public hearing.
Okay.
And so that's why it was discussed.
Yeah. It doesn't have my name on the warrant. No, but that's a big deal.
Oh, I think it's on the other side of it.
Yep, you're right. So, uh, so once some discussion about changing the tax due dates to honor a vote. And I got thinking about that. And I think that's just gonna cause confusion. But I don't see that in any of the versions here.
Um. Has that been?
Somebody made it, somebody changed that online during the meeting. Which is probably Owen, because you were sharing it on your screen. The comment came from Sandra or was a, uh, an attempt to, uh, to deal with some, one of her pieces of feedback, because she was putting her, uh, she put her lawyer glasses on.
I, I just think this is gonna be confusing enough, and to add that degree of uncertainty in there, I'm not comfortable with that. And, and it's only advisory. I mean, our intent is that they would be due on October first and April first.
Right.
I think we should stick with what our intent is. They wouldn't be, I, I don't want people to get the impression that taxes are some mushy date.
Yeah.
Which I know it wasn't her intent, but.
Our, our plan, yeah, our intent is October first and April first.
Yeah. Okay.
Oh, by the way, the town can change that.
Oh, and that's what was on the one you sent to Moira.
Okay, so we good? We good, Walter?
I'm good.
Yeah, I would just ask you guys to look at the, uh, the fact sheet that, that was on the website that Owen just sent to us. I haven't seen it yet. And if you got any changes, that's the one I'll start with. That's the document I worked from.
Well, the first thing is that, uh, in the first sentence of the first paragraph of the body, there's a misspell.
Okay, the website one? I don't have that one, so.
The first question. Are there advantages? There is the possessive.
Yeah.
I'm not even gonna touch it.
Yeah, no, I'm not.
Yeah, don't change.
No, I'm not, I'm not even looking at it.
No. Nope. I'll start with that one. I won't get a chance to look at that until, at least probably Friday. I'm tied up in the morning and then I gotta smell it, or I gotta start my colonoscopy stuff. I had my lawyer laying there, you know, waiting.
Okay.
I hope you don't have COVID and I hope you don't have polyps, John.
I had a COVID test today.
That was, that was fun. Um. Walter, when did you wanna talk about Zoom versus YouTube in there? We have items remaining.
I, I, I've got a, um, I've got a call into, uh, into Thomistood to find out what they're doing and how they do the credentials distribution. I just think that we should make this easier and, uh, um, and if, if they come back and tell me that, uh, they published the, uh, the invite on their website for everybody to have, then I'm gonna say, why shouldn't we do that?
Yep, my, the, just food for thought, the way that I kind of worked around that and, and any sort of Zoom bombing, um, pop in was the day of the public hearing. I sent out to the lister their credentials and then also placed it under the calendar. When you click up the meeting, the credentials were there, but it was only publicly available for one day. I requested that people ask me for it and I would send it to them when I hadn't really got anything. That's when I made it go public the, the day before, keeping the time period for it to be found.
Okay, it's just that I, I, Zoom is interactive and, and oral and YouTube is not, and, and it just seems to me that never mind, that this is, this is not the right time for this discussion.
Does Zoom keep a record though?
You can record it on Zoom, but you have to like then start, start doing like that and data storage in certain senses and cloudy based stuff. The benefit of just clicking it, go live on Zoom or on YouTube is YouTube stores it all for us.
Yeah, but Zoom has a record button.
Yes, I just don't know where, if we have to pay to re, to retain all of that, do we have to keep it on? Do I have to keep these massive files on our server? I'm not saying it's not doable. I'm sure, I'm positive it all is.
I'll ask, because I do Zoom, uh, good, good, every week. And they're all.
That thing is when you talk to them, they can find out it. Kind of running out of gas.
Yeah.
Um, do you want me to just kind of fly through these last three, Walter?
Sure.
Okay, review and update of maintenance priorities, but the only thing that was changed was, um, Penny brought up an item. I included that. It's all in my report. Brian prioritized his. Thank you very much, Brian. Um, Chelsea brought up that we might wanna look at the, the fault, and I know that we have a system in there, but does that system need improving? Because those are vital records. Um, so not a huge amount of change to that. Uh, we'll continue to build that out. Anything, anything on maintenance? Well, streetlights, like I said, um, there was some COVID concern within Headstrom Electric. I did text with Tom today. He didn't let me know how things went. That might push the install date back later than we wanted, but we're still looking at somewhere between one to two weeks for that to be done. Any questions on that?
Nope.
And then on the property tax liens, you basically have three uh, that need to get sent out. Um, there was one from twenty thirteen. I mean, unless, if you all wanna keep the twenty thirteen one, but that falls squarely outside the statute of limitations for.
Which one is that?
Well, we're talking about project tax liens?
I'm sorry, uh, it, per, uh, personal property tax.
That's a property tax.
Yeah, so the, that was to, we had a longer title because wanted to let you all know that we put out the, the thirty day, thirty to forty five day notifications.
This was that.
Yeah, and they will mature December sixth on the personal property tax.
Well, before you leave that, so notices have gone out, the thirty five notices have gone out on all of these.
Yes.
Okay.
On the personal property tax, um, there are five remaining. One of which is twenty thirteen, so a really big effort to try to get your nine hundred bucks. The, I kind of removed another because I had a conversation with that business owner who is also our road commissioner. And he, uh, stopped his business, we believe, prior to when he should have been assessed those personal property taxes. And I also think that if there is an opportunity to consider an abatement for any of this, I can't think of any person whose equipment or personal property has been utilized for the benefit of the town any more than our road commissioner. I would feel really poor in doing that. However, uh, when I talk with them, we're gonna talk with the assessor and see if that was just, um, assessed because they weren't informed that, um, he had already terminated certain things, so that one we're working on. There are three remaining.
I don't even remember him being on the list.
No, I don't either.
I kept him off the list. I, I'm sorry. I'm not, I, I can't do that with that guy. Yeah, I wanted to work it out. I figured there was a way of working it out. I'm not sending that man.
Owen, you can't do that.
We, there are a lot of ways to communicate with these folks and I, with that.
You kept him off the list from us.
No, I kept the letter, the specific letter.
I don't remember him being on the list.
He was on the list. I, I didn't take him off that list. Um, but these are the three remaining that we have. Is Mainco Seafood, the Spruce Head Pizza. With that one, we really have to get something out, because that expiration, uh, statute of limitations coming up shortly.
That one you've never been to.
I know.
I don't even think that guy's here around. Yeah, he's around.
And then Chipper's. Um, but then there is this one, Russell Montgomery. It's nine hundred and twenty five dollars, but that's the twenty thirteen one, of which the statute already expired. So the only three we're not really questionable about or think that there's, you know, it wouldn't be simple, uh, is the Mainco Seafood, Chipper's and Spruce Head Pizza. And really, just because I provided all that additional information in your packets was the only reason that we haven't sent them out. Didn't know if you had any additional thoughts on your options as the board on how you wanna resolve this. If you don't have any in that draft letter that I sent out with just some very light additional language about this being that, again, a continued reminder, um, then what we'll do is we will process our current interest for tomorrow and send those out tomorrow, uh, certified mail.
Am I dreaming or do we come up with a plan for last meeting?
No, we did.
And you just totally just forgot it.
No, it was, um.
Well, with a plan wise, you were gonna simply take that letter, put a note on it and send the other letter out.
Yes, between then and this meeting, I, I feel like there were some questions about statute of limitation, other options for the board. And I put a slight pause on it so that you all could reflect on the information in the tax collector's manual to see if you had any additional thoughts on how you wanted to move this forward.
I was aware of all that stuff. I read the manual. I, all I wanted to do was just send that letter out again. That's simple as that. I didn't wanna spend a lot of ti, I don't wanna spend a lot of effort or time on this. Personally, we're talking small amounts of money. And Jerry was on the two thousand nineteen list, which was never on the original older list.
Right. So they will, I mean.
I mean, we're not gonna do the distress. Most of the property is gone, you know? And I don't wanna say this, but basically I'm just trying to shake the tree and see what falls out.
Yeah.
I don't wanna put a lot of effort into it.
Nope, then tomorrow they will be sent out with their current interest on tomorrow's date.
But I don't wanna do a new letter. That was, that's not what I wanted to do.
That's, that's the, basically the exact same letter. I added some light additional learning language to it.
All I wanted to do was to send out the old letter and say, we sent you this earlier. And now we're sending it registered to you to, that, see, this doesn't create the trap that, the the trap that I want, trail, trail, thank you.
Um, yeah, I thought that what I added was in the last, that last portion, I included some additional, I mean, it wasn't crazy yellowy language, but it was.
I know, I know, I know.
And that was the ones that were sent out.
Yep. And all I wanted you to do was take these and send it to the six people in another envelope.
Mm-hmm.
Ten minute job. And then we got all this stuff and, oh, dress sales and, you know, but, okay.
I, if I recall, you all asked me to check with MMA legal and I did, and when I got that new information.
I don't think we asked that. I, 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 I give up. You got, do, do what you want.
Then we will send them out tomorrow.
Spruce Head Pizza, do we have the current address or do we still send it to the old business address?
He lives on Clark Avenue.
Yeah.
Was that Conti? Did he own that?
No.
Was somebody else?
No, no. It was founder Clark, uh, excuse me. I did with Conti at the very end.
Yeah, no, that's, that's not Conti, no.
That's not Conti.
Um, Owen?
Yes.
Um, so on November twelfth, is Dakota gonna come here and uninstall all of Chelsea's furniture and take it home, or should we buy it?
Uh, you should buy it.
All right.
The desk that Chelsea has, she purchased.
Everything that she's got in there, which she bought it and her husband is. Everything that she's got in there, which she bought it and her husband installed it. And it, it's like a ten X improvement to that workspace.
I didn't even issue.
I mean, there's a lot of stuff that we buy to try to keep the budget down and our performance up.
Figure out with her what it should cost us.
I have warrants that need some signatures. I need to just amend some of the appointments. So I need signatures on the state valuation appointments and the warrants. While I do that, do you all want to schedule any meetings while I go in and do that and just tell me what the meetings are?
Tenth, twenty fourth of November, fifteenth of December, eighth of December for the town meeting. And how do we want to start the new year?
So Walter, can you run, run that by me again?
November tenth. Let me just make sure I got.
No, it's select board now, right? Tenth and the twenty fourth.
November tenth.
Yeah.
November twenty fourth.
Yeah.
Because we're all going to be home for Thanksgiving, aren't we?
Yeah.
But the Select Board Budget Committee, right, meeting, that's what I was wondering.
I do that daily soon.
Yeah, well, we need to, don't we need to approve the warrant first?
I, I don't know. I think we have to have it finalized. I don't know if we have to execute it.
Okay, well, as soon as.
We could, theoretically, we could come up with some changes based on that discussion, I suppose.
I'll have, I'll have the warrant as I know it done tomorrow.
All right, so how about, how about we zoom with them on November the fifth?
Thursday the fifth.
Week from tonight.
Um, yeah, that's my clam meeting night.
Okay.
All right, so let's start at the beginning.
Post it?
Yeah. If you get the post. Yeah.
Fifth for the Budget Committee. Tenth for the Select Board. Twenty fourth for the Select Board. Eighth of December for the Select, eighth of December for the Town Meeting.
Yep.
Fifteenth of December for our final meeting of the year. And then the twelfth of January for the first meeting in January. And if we stay on, if we stay on the every two, every twice a month, it will be the twenty sixth.
Is there anywhere we could move the meeting on the twelfth up to the fifth? Because I'm going to be gone for a bit in January.
The, the twelfth of January?
Yeah.
That's fine with me.
To the fifth, and then I'd only miss one meeting instead of two. I mean, I can zoom. But I wouldn't be able to zoom on the fifth because I would be on the road.
I'm sorry, so what are you, what are you, what are you asking?
I wouldn't be able to zoom on the twelfth because I'd be on the road.
Okay, so you want to do the fifth?
I could. And then by the time the next one comes around, I can zoom.
So the nineteenth?
Well, yeah, whatever.
Nineteenth and the twenty sixth.
Yeah, nineteenth of the twenty sixth.
Let's leave it the twenty sixth so we don't, then two weeks later, we'll.
Yeah, that, that puts us back in our cadence if we do the twenty sixth.
And I think we, should we schedule a meeting for Spruce Head Island Road?
Island Road Project, yeah.
Oh, back to the Budget Meeting, just a second, Walter. I have, I have zero interest in meeting in person.
So do I.
With fifteen people in this room.
You know that we got the plan from Andrew today.
It showed up just before.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I didn't look at it. I didn't even read his email.
Yeah, neither did I.
Suggesting we schedule a meeting to talk about. And I think we told people, give them at least seven days notice.
Right.
Second week in November is full. The third week in November, the week of the sixteen is open for me.
When was November fifth?
The Budget Committee.
Select Board, it would be a Zoom meeting.
How long do we think that's going to take?
I don't see why it's going to take anything more than an hour. I mean, they're going to vote on three articles.
I mean, could we have two meetings?
I don't know. That's a week from now, so they don't get there seven days.
I know, that's what it's worth.
And we have no shot at it before, if we wanted seven days, we'd have to do it tonight or tomorrow. And, and we'd, we'd have no shot at it before we put it out there.
You can't do anything the next weekend?
Well, Monday the ninth, I got it open.
I can do Monday. I can do Monday the night. And we're just talking a Zoom meeting.
Yeah, we said.
Could be a long one.
Could be.
That work for you, Walter?
Yeah, I'm just thinking about the so Zoom meeting on November ninth and get the get the plan on the website, the plans on the website with whatever, with whatever commentary on the second.
I don't understand what you mean by that.
A week ahead of time have this, these plans on the website. I think, I think obviously we're going to have to digest these ourselves before we.
Tax collector. End of twenty two. And I have the original state valve thing that the assessor's agent gave us, but I don't think that an original, there's not really any difference between a copy of the original for that state valve.
If you give me one at a time, I'll time. Yeah, just make, make one your.
Well, Jan, I, I, the way I envision this is we're just going to read them ourselves and then discuss it with the engineer on on that date.
So that'd be the first time we talk about it with everybody there.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, that's how I envision it.
So we're basically all hearing from Andrew at the same time.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I, but I do think the Selectman, Walter, can have a discussion about it with Andrew before you open it up to the public. You know what I mean?
Looking for feedback, comments and suggestions. He says, once you're satisfied with the concept, I'll take a couple of weeks to refine the plan. So this is a conceptual document that he sent us tonight.
So does it change?
I don't think we can give them feedback until we have a meeting to discuss it, and we've agreed not to meet unless it was.
I have had an inquiry, I had an inquiry today by someone who wanted to know where we stood with that. I said, I had gotten plans, but we, until I get the okay from the board to put them up, I don't, there's nothing for me to put up until you all say it's okay.
Return the plans that came out tonight at five o'clock.
Andrew had sent them to me earlier, and we went and talked about them today. The gentleman reached out wanting to, to know where we stood on that.
You shouldn't say that then. Because at that point, the Select Board hadn't even gotten anything from the engineer. But it's okay, it's up to them.
Well, I think we should put, I think, are we going to meet on the ninth? Do we need on the ninth?
Oh, so Owen?
Yes.
Right now, we, we're heading towards a Zoom meeting on the Island Road Project on the ninth of November.
Well, we got to make sure Andrew's available.
Yeah, and that means that no later than the second of November, we post the plans. And do we want to try to converse with Andrew before that, before the ninth?
I don't, and I think that would violate our motion.
Okay, that's fine. So on the ninth, we're going to say, take us through our new, the, the, the new alternative or an alternative.
Yeah, I would call it a concept, which is what he calls it.
Right.
As opposed to a plan.
Right. Yeah. The.
So Owen, we scheduled a bunch of meetings while you weren't here.
Great.
Want me to run you down, run them down for you? Owen?
Yes, one second. Go ahead.
Okay, on November fifth, we want to have a Zoom meeting with the Budget Committee for purposes of making recommendations on the warrant article for the town meeting that's going to take place on December the eighth.
What time do we have, Walter?
I suppose six. I mean, Camille works, Kate works, Moira works, Beverly, Cherry works, Beverly works, maybe.
Want to do seven?
Yeah, let's, let's do seven, and I'll, I'll tell Moira that we're doing seven out of consideration for all the, all those workers.
It doesn't take long.
No, I know. Especially if they prep.
The, and I'm sorry if I missed it, the November ninth road project time and format, that's Zoom as well.
The November what?
Ninth.
Yes, that's Zoom.
Time. Ti- time, start time on that?
Six.
Notice is key on that.
It's to midnight.
Select Board on the tenth?
Select Board on November tenth and November twenty fourth. Town meeting on December eighth. Select Board on December fifteenth.
Town meeting at seven PM?
Yeah.
Seven?
Seven on the eighth. Select boards are usually six.
Six. Okay, are you with me on December fifteenth for the last Select Board meeting of the year, Owen?
Yes.
Okay. So January fifth, we're going to be out of cadence for the, for the first week in Jan, the first one in January. And then we'll recover by having one on January twenty sixth, which enables us to roll into February.
And can someone, I guess I'm a little confused on the note that I have for November second to post the plans.
Yeah, we, we committed that the plans would be posted seven days in advance of the Zoom meeting.
And that's.
That's what you set out tonight.
Yep, yep, and that would be the latest, the absolute latest. I mean, I'm happy to post them right now. I just wanted to get good guys.
Can we read them before we post them?
Yeah. Sure.
Please.
I recommend we do.
All right, then, I will set a reminder on my phone for this Thursday in the early afternoon to try to see whether you all have anything that would stop me from posting it on Thursday, the twenty ninth, few days from now.
What? Oh, Thursday, the twenty ninth of October. But. Okey dokey. And so what conversation did you have about this with Andrew?
What I did with Andrew was looked over what he had proposed. He explained to me where, where his rationale was coming from. We talked about things like, I'll give you an example, so that the half moved driveway stays as a half.
I don't think we should be having this discussion. I'm not comfortable with it.
Ah, you're right, okay, because he's getting into the substance. And I, and I was going to further say that.
We're going to continue it. I'm going to leave.
No, 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 I'd further say that the cone of silence descends upon you with all citizens' inquiries, Owen, and, and the rest of us, that, that we're not going to discuss the new plans with anyone until we discuss them with everyone on November ninth.
Including Andrew. It would be the first time we've had a chance to discuss them with Andrew.
And to be clear, the person I, sorry, sir.
Owen does need to talk to Andrew to make sure he's available for the night.
Right. But no substantive discussions?
No, and I did not have any substantive discussions today with the individual that reached out. Just said, we have gotten some revised plans. My hope is the board sets a meeting tonight, and we'll get them out as soon as possible, and we can go from there.
But, but I think if people want to email questions in ahead of time, that's fine, but they need to understand from Owen and from us that we're not going to give any answers because we haven't discussed it with Andrew.
Well, we, we've got a whole list of questions already from.
Right.
John, what's his name?
Right, but I mean, the email question, the revised plans, we shouldn't be responding because we haven't discussed it with Andrew.
Do we want to forward those to Andrew when we get questions? So he's.
I think that's fine. Four one is four on.
So I have a reminder in my phone for this Thursday at three PM to figure out where we're at on putting those plans on the website and emailing them around.
And announcing the meeting.
I'll probably announce the meeting before then.
All right, we better confirm Andrew first, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Warrant sign. Oh my God.
Thought these were supposed to go quicker with these two meetings.
That's right, that's why we're having two of us, right?
I've got a lot on our plate, obviously. Think we could have done all this in one?
Yeah.
I think we, uh. We tend to talk a lot of ones.
And I don't even go to, I, I can't even go get a McChicken on the way home tonight, cause I'm home.
Yeah. Uh, I think we, I think we gotta, there's a lot of talk that we need to do.
Yeah.
And a lot of, we're spending a lot of our time just figuring out what version we're talking about on the document.
Make sure my line, I can get it.
Yep. I see this.
Do you wanna talk anything about this cash flow analysis that you gave us?
Um, the, the cash flow analysis was to just give you all that first initial, um, peek into what we were seeing on a, a month by month basis. Um, we were holding off just slightly on going more in depth, depending on the board's comfort level with continuing forward on the eighteen month. Um, now that we know we're gonna continue on that track, then additional evaluation, looking for the big drivers, doing the historical reference on those. Really, it's, it's eighteen month budget prep. And it was also just making sure that you all are aware that we are, you know, producing those items to, to get that task accomplished.
How, how come, uh, three months of, uh, twenty twenty are not in here?
Which three months?
Last, July, August and September.
Uh, because we only did the, we're, we're doing eighteen months, so the twelve months from nineteen plus the first six.
A twenty-eighteen month kind of comparison and we're using twenty nineteen and twenty twenty.
Yes, and we wanted continuity of the same months that we would be dealing with.
All right, I get it now. Thank you. Answer my question.
No, that was just, um, because I didn't have them listed out in the meeting minutes. And then I did add them, but Chelsea had sent that to me and so I just, it was just in FYI. You all have already accepted those donations.
Are you gonna include that in the minutes at some point?
I, I did. I took their names off and I just put the names, not addresses, uh, in the meeting minutes. So there's no personal information in it, the amount that they donated or where they live, just their individual names. But I provided that to, to you all, just Chelsea had given it to me in that format.
Tell me who Rahabat Carlson is. Is he Andrew?
Yes.
And the three hundred and thirty thirty eight, are you and Chelsea, I take it as in lieu of payments for insurance?
Yes. And yes. You do what I think if there was confusion on it, John had built his track changes upon your track changes. And I just hadn't anticipated pulling all those together for tonight. And then John said, could we get the clean copy? So I went through and was just winding out, except, except, except. But with two different amenders to that document or what I was perceiving, attempting to, to bring all those notes together.
All you need to do is go up to the line and it'll say accept. You kick, it's got a little down arrow.
Yep.
And it'll drop down and accept all. Click on that and it will take everything.
And what I don't know is, one of those two meeting minutes, I'm assuming the other one, John did build it on yours. This one, because I was going quick to try to clean it up. He might not have built upon your changes and your changes were in a different document.
And I said that, I said that.
Yeah, 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 and it was me trying to get clean copies.
I tried to send an email, but anyone else.
And I C C everybody on. No, like, I mean, I was trying to get it done very quickly.
But the problem, the rap, the root of the problem is we should be dealing with one set, maybe two sets of minutes. And then we'll, once we get caught up, we'll get caught up and we'll be done. Okay, I think, I think this is done. Do I sign more over here?
Twenty seconds of type one.
Yes.
We just needed time to look at it.
Oh, these are three different, one of these, ambulance, I see.
Yeah, we just initialed all of this.
What's this account?
Does it say at the top?
Oh, it's not common.
Isn't there a handprint?
Ambulance checking, ambulance saving.
Yeah, they have those separate accounts.
Oh, really?
That's, remember when, when we talked about the charitable donations and that policy that we were talking about?
Yeah, but I didn't know they, I didn't know they had. I knew it had an account, but I didn't.
I think it has very little money in it, usually she moves money from savings to checking when she needs it.
And I believe that, I believe that as it relates to any of the expenditures or rules around that, both those accounts are identical. They're just one's checking, one's saving, but I think they fall under the exact same authority to do. And how they got separated into two different, I'm not sure.
Um, what's this debit account? Three hundred and fifteen dollars?
Oh, no, we only keep a certain amount on the debit card itself. That has to prevent someone getting a hold of it, so. But if we do an online purchase like Zoom and we need to use a card and it's different.
So how come we don't have one for our main checking?
Maybe it was already done in the previous meeting and it's a monthly statement. I don't have an answer for you. Phil puts those together and I can see.
Yeah, I think we're done with the administrative things, Walter.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Oh, second.
All in favor, say aye.
I've been, don't you aye?
Right side. Thank you all. Drive safely. Be well, John.